Welcome to the Fairfax Planning Commission Meeting, September 19th, 2024. Can I please get a roll call?
Newton?
Here or here?
Bela? Beford? Swift?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Petrone?
Here.
Chair Jansen?
Here. Thank you. Approval of the agenda? Are there any changes proposed? Does anybody want to add anything to the agenda? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as listed.
Second?
I'll second.
Oh, I thought Kelly said, who's, I thought, sorry, Kelly beat you to it, Newton.
That's okay.
All right. Newton, Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Petrone?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye.
I will read the meeting protocol. The chairs shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert Rules of Order and the Planning Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at Planning Commission meetings. The Planning Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of Planning Commission members, staff, members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. All interest persons are invited to participate in the public meetings in order to give all interest persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentations of all points of view. Members of the audience should: One, limit their presentations to three minutes; Two, provide their comments by email as described above; Three, state their view and concerns succinctly; And four, submit any new documents to the planning staff first, directly or by email, to planning@thetownoffairfax.org to be entered in the record. Then we'll start off with public comments on items that are not on the agenda. So anything new that the public wants to talk to them. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Fritz Durn. I'm a resident at 27 Alima Road. And I'm here to draw the commission's attention towards Ten Olima. This is something that I know is on the radar a little bit, but that's an operation that's been red-tagged a couple of times. Works continued through. They had a large grand opening that overwhelmed the neighborhood. There's been, to my knowledge, no package submitted, no kinds of plans applied for. And they are just pretty much in an op, a mode of operation of kind of do it and ask for forgiveness later. And that's a grave concern for our neighborhood. You know, there's talk of, it's supposed to be commercial limited. It's not supposed to be a retail space. It's obviously a retail space. They call it artist studios and design space, but nobody's really working there. They're bringing in products and selling them. You know, it's quiet the way it is, but it's really the concern for what's coming. The owner has shared that they have a desire to put in a beer pub or a beer garden, which would be all exterior. It's supposed to be all services contained within buildings. They clearly have plans to be doing things outdoors. They've expressed a desire to have outdoor events, pumpkin patch, Christmas tree farm. And those are just the kinds of things that we have in other places near our town, and we don't necessarily need them in a quiet neighborhood of working-class people where people can come and take Instagram photos on the weekends, you know. So again, pretty quiet the way it is, but it's really about what's coming and the lack of respect for the town rules, regulations, and really any kind of enforcement taking place. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Before the next speaker starts, please come forward, but I see the timer is not working. Or? It was perfectly three minutes, but we couldn't see it. Thank you. Oh, okay. That's all right. Okay. No, it's okay. Please go ahead. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Carr. I'm a resident at 23 Alima Road, and I'm here for many of the same reasons that my neighbor is. It's more just to express concern about the way things have been going thus far and extra concern about what is to come. This property has not submitted any permits to my knowledge. They've been red-tagged twice and just kept going. There was nothing to stop them, so they just took advantage of that. They now have new buildings, refurbished buildings, and there's still a lot of space on the property. And as my neighbor said, they have plans for other things. We don't know what. And it's, it's just concerning because it is a neighborhood, and I realize that that property is zoned. It used to be the restaurant on it. That's, you know, 50 years ago, and a lot has changed since then. It's a safe routes to school route. It's a huge pedestrian walkway. People walk on it all the time. There are dogs, families, bicyclists on the weekends. It's a, it's a, it's a main corridor in Fairfax, for sure, that one, that little area. So I'm just concerned about what's to come and the fact that the town hasn't stepped in. You know, they, they put up a sign and, and then didn't enforce it. And if that's what's been presented to the people at Ten Olima, they're just going to continue in the future. And I know that they have plans. I don't know what they are, but I do know that they have plans. So I'm just here to express concern and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers, the audience? Please go ahead.
Is it appropriate to talk about the Airbnb issue at this point?
No, only items not on the agenda. So anything new, but that will come. Do we have any speakers on Zoom?
I do have one hand online.
Okay.
Deborah Lee, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me, Commissioners, Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. I'm also concerned about what's going on at Ten Olima. I've been told they've been red-tagged three times. They continued work. A building inspector told them if they continued through these red tags, he would cite them individually. They have built, they built up to the property line. They've crammed buildings in together. Now there's a container on the property I noticed today. They have a sign up that would, would be outside of our, our sign ordinance, a big wavy welcome sign at the, right by the 25 mile on our speed limit sign. And I was told that they had picked up documents to come before the Planning Commission, but there doesn't seem to be any movement on that. And I'm wondering, you know, if they're just going to get away with this. They are unlimited commercial, which doesn't allow for retail or these food trucks that they were planning or music. So I'm wondering what happens if they continue to ignore our ordinances. Are they going to just be able to get away with it? I hope not. So thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I do have one more hand online.
Please go ahead.
Lynn? Lynn, please go ahead.
Hi. I had a question, well, actually concern about the sign at the corner of Sir Francis Drake and Miranda Drive that says Charter School, that metal sign. We've had students in our neighborhood that went to school there. Fifty-six years at school was there, never needed a sign. I don't know why they can't monitor the people that they say are going in and out the wrong way, but I think that sign has to go. There used to be a brick wall there, but that got bumped in so many times that they just flattened it. And now, if kids are riding on the bicycle, people are walking in groups. There's just a metal, a metal pole in the way. I mean, I don't know how something can work for 56 years, and then all of a sudden we need a sign on top of a sign that's 40 feet away or whatever it is that says Charter School. And then they've got three signs there that say do not enter. So something's got to give. It, it's a nuisance. And it's, it's not Charter School neighborhood. It's Miranda Oaks. So that's, that's that. And I'll talk about the lighting stuff later. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I see we have one more in the audience. Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Krista, and I'm at across, I'm at Alima Road as well. And as has already been mentioned, I don't want to repeat anything, but I think as we're moving forward to whatever's to come, what would be helpful for us as neighbors is that there's more transparency and discussion. There's been a lot of fear of the unknown, and that's been the real, the real difficulty. So we feel at a loss that we don't have any communication, nor do we have, we don't really feel like we have, anybody's got our backs. And so that's what we would like to have, is communication and understand what's going on. And what I'm really concerned about, just because of how this happened so quickly since March, boom, is that I'm a little concerned since there's, I don't have trust in what's gone on so far. I'm concerned about like a bait and switch. So you say one thing, you get this, and then it's something else. So I just want to bring that to your awareness, that we can all work together. Thank you.
Thank you for that input. And I think in general, if if construction happens without permits, it will get stopped ultimately. And conversely, if construction is desired, that needs review by this panel, then it ultimately will come here. But I can see there's time going on. Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, then we will proceed with our. Please step forward.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff. I just want to keep on the, you know, to-do pile, the situation at Ten Olima. Ten Olima, which is a supposed art collective, that's really a retail space, has had numerous permit violations, is not zoned for retail, and is a, an example of what the commission needs to think about when it comes to enforcing the type of permits that we set up for conditional use permits and so on. There, this came up quite a bit during the town council meeting, the latest town council meeting. There were a number of local people that had something to say about it. And I don't live there, but I attended their opening. And I do think that there's, this is a sight of concern. So just keep it on your radar. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more, we will proceed with the regular agenda. Can I get a staff report on item number one, 16 Cypress Drive?
So this project includes small additions to both the front and back west sides of the single-family residence, minor interior remodeling to add a half bathroom, a closet for one of the existing bedrooms, and a small room and full bathroom addition adjacent to a third bedroom at the rear of the house. It includes construction of a front porch with new front access stairs. The remodel and expansion will increase the 1,385 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bathroom house to 1,713 square foot, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bathroom residence. The project is not a 50% remodel. It does not require the removal of any trees. It will decrease the existing legal non-conforming 69% lot coverage to 53%. It will not increase the height of the structure, and the site is not within a quarter mile of any known northern spotted owl nesting site. Staff initially required the applicant to submit a historical assessment of the property structures because the house was built in 1925 and had craftsman architectural features. Alice Duffy, a local historic preservation planner, inspected the site and the structures inside and out, reviewed historical records, and determined it no longer retains, due to the modifications that have been made over the years to both the house and the accessory structure, sufficient physical integrity to convey its 1925 design and does not qualify as a historic resource. The project requires the approval of both a conditional use permit and a combined side yard setback variance and a combined front and rear setback variance. These variances are, are being caused by the location of the 1925 garage being built one foot from the rear property line and two feet from the eastern side property line. So while the additions meet the minimum in combined side, side yard setbacks themselves, when you take it in conjunction with the existing building, it requires these variances, but it's really not going to have a significant impact on the neighbors. So the addition is modest. It doesn't increase the number of bedrooms in the house, and it only adds a half bathroom. And it results in a structure that's in proportion with the project site. It's similar to development seen on other similar-sized properties in the neighborhood, and it's been designed to complement the architecture of the neighboring residential structures while not impacting their privacy. We've, staff's added one condition to allow the addition at the front of the house at the southwest corner to follow the line of the existing west side wall to create a better floor plan for that front bedroom. We have included in the, that the, in the condition that that, that modification can be made. It's not going to change the setbacks or anything, and it may be approved by the planning director at the building permit stage. So we're recommending that you approve the project proposed in application 24-11 based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in resolution number 2024-14, which is attachment aid to the staff report. And that would conclude our report.
Questions for staff?
Is there any record of input from neighbors based upon applicant efforts or city?
So that the neighbors for 300, neighbors and the tenants for 300 feet around the property all received a notice 10 days ahead of time, and we received no comments from anybody.
No comments. Okay.
Any more? Commissioner Swift?
So the plans don't show any exterior lighting. Can you speak to that?
So I checked with the applicant today, and I think I'm going to ask him to address that when he stands up. He did, he didn't put them on the plans unless I missed them, but he is considering putting two lights maybe in the porch area under the porch roof. But he'll have to give you more detail on that.
Any more questions? Seeing none, is the applicant here? And please step forward and turn on the microphone.
Hello?
Would you like to present the project, talk to us, or?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was really kind of born, you know, from the need. It's technically a three-bedroom house, but it's really more like a two. The third bedroom, which is kind of benefiting the most from this addition, is actually an enclosed porch. The walls are exterior stucco. The windows are, you know, they were a retrofit enclosure of the porch. They're non-operational and don't really facilitate for like a good usable bedroom. Our children who are 12 and eight share the second bedroom currently. So we're kind of just thinking, soon they're going to want their own spaces, and we kind of wanted to make that third bedroom, you know, true kind of livable, viable space. So that's how the project kind of came to be. And Linda, thank you for the great summary. I, I thought she represented all the components, you know, all the goals really well. We tried to keep it, you know, fairly minimal, tried to keep it in, in character of the building. You know, nothing audacious or loud or, you know, tall. Tried to respect all the required setbacks despite the fact that the garage, you know, is, is in a location that does trigger the variance request. The, the front porch was an idea just to, one, you know, kind of have a level roof plane across the front, but also, you know, activate the front of the house, activate the front yard, you know, engage with the neighborhood. There was a safety component as well. Currently, the, the front door, when you open it, just goes directly on the steps. So the idea of having a level landing outside of that front door was a, a component of that as well. But we're, we're excited about that as a, as an amenity, the porch itself. And then, yeah, lighting, I mean, we're, we're certainly wanting to be sensitive about, you know, lighting of the neighborhood and night skies and everything. And so if there's anything we should consider with the, you know, lighting of the porch, we're open to ideas. But I think it will have sort of a ceiling structure to it. And I was envisioning, you know, maybe one or two flush pendants to, you know, provide some lighting at night, but we're, you know, open to ideas on that.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the applicants? None, seeing none. I do have a question for you. I was looking at the, the area coverage, and so on your drawing, in the new situation, it appears to be that there is no pavement on the, neither of the parking spots or getting to it. So what is the thinking? What would, where would the cars drive on? Where would you walk on?
Well, I think one of the calculations required, you know, a limitation to the amount of impervious, you know, surfaces. And so to offset the addition of the house and the roofed area and thus impervious surfaces there, we had proposed to convert the current concrete driveway to a type of permeable paver, I think. So we hadn't selected the exact product yet, but something that, you know, allows for rainwater to soak through that rather than off is kind of how we envisioned the driveway, but still ultimately utilizing the driveway and the carport structure that's in front of the garage.
Okay, yeah, I was expecting something. It didn't say so in the drawing, so I was curious. Thank you for that. No other questions? So is there anybody, the public would like to speak to this application? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
I see no hands online.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anybody want to share observations?
Yeah, I'd like to just say that I'm very familiar with the neighborhood and house particularly. I think the porch is a great addition. It's a pretty lively corner of our town, and I think I, I can imagine a, a good engagement from the house to the street right there. So I actually am in full support of the project. I think it'll be great.
Any other comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm in support of the project, and I would like to add to the resolution a paragraph on dark sky, just so we have it in there, our usual requirement. I don't know where you want to.
We'll put it at, on the last page, the second to the last page, under Planning Department Conditions as Condition 19, if that's okay with everyone. That's where we normally put it, is in the, at the end.
So I want to make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-14, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 2412 for conditional use permit and combined front and rear yards setback and combined side yard setback variances, remodel slash expansion of the existing single-family residence at 16 Cypress Drive with the addition for a number 19 requirement.
Second?
All right, Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Petrone?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye.
Okay, motion?
Yes, the motion passed. So there is, if you want to appeal the decision, you'll have to do so within 10 days by submitting to the town clerk. And with that, congratulations. We'll move on to item number two on the agenda.
Thank you.
Can I get a staff report on 59 Wood Lane?
So this project consists of the demolition of an existing small cabin that's not in very good shape to construct a 2,084 square foot, two-story, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bathroom, single-family dwelling and a 336 square foot accessory structure that will contain one covered parking space and approximately 576 square foot combination garage ADU. So the accessory structure is part garage, one, one parking space, and then the ADU. The project includes construction of a six-foot-tall fence along the front and side property lines and the installation of landscaping, a drainage system, utility lines, and slide protection measures. The project will not require the removal of any mature trees, subject to the tree removal ordinance. The site's not located within a quarter mile of any known northern spotted owl nesting site, and the vegetative management plan has been approved by the Ross Valley Fire Department. The project requires the approval of a hill area residential development permit, an excavation permit, a design review permit, a minimum front setback variance, and a combined side yard setback variance. The house and combination garage ADU were located on either sides of this narrow 50-foot-wide site so that the parking and the accessory dwelling unit do not block the entire street view of the house. It leaves an open area where you can see as part of the house from the street. The location of the, the location of the ADU, only six feet from the front property line, doesn't comply with our ADU ordinance, which requires that accessory dwelling units be located 10 feet back from the property line. But it's only a small triangular piece of the ADU because of the irregular orientation of the front property line to the two side property lines that is actually in the required 10-foot front setback. So they are requiring some variances, which is pretty standard on some of these older lots. You know, it's really hard to meet the minimum and the combined setbacks and still have a development that kind of meets the character of the neighborhood. The, okay, so the, the house, the design of the house combines craftsman-style features with modern farmhouse features. All of the proposed exterior lighting fixtures will be dark sky compliant, and the exterior colors and materials complement those of the neighboring duplexes and the nearby neighboring residential buildings. There's duplexes on either side of this single-family home site. Town engineer reviewed the project three times before recommending that enough information had been provided that he could, he could make the determination that the project could be built with it without creating drainage or soil stability risks for neighboring properties, the site residents themselves, and without creating potential risks for the neighboring Wood Lane roadway improvements. The town engineer agreed with the project engineer's recommendation that due to drainage issues experienced along the length of Wood Lane on both sides of the street and the height of the water table below ground when a lot of rain comes down very quickly, that a mat foundation should be built beneath the structure. A debris barrier wall's been included in the preliminary drainage design to capture any material that might slide from the rear landslide-prone area of the site to protect the residents of the house and neighboring homes and the town road improvements. The preliminary design also includes, includes a drainage plan that ensures that the project does not increase the speed or volume of the surface or subsurface water that naturally occurs and that it does not direct the existing flow towards either of the neighboring properties. Following agencies had the following specific conditions for the project. Ross Valley Fire Department required that all construction materials be kept well away from the structures during construction. The Ross Valley Sanitary District indicated that the project requires sewer lateral compliance and that all laterals, including the proposed ADU lateral, must meet Ross Valley Sanitary District testing requirements. MMWD commented that no, there are no water meter entitlements for the ADU, although there are, there is one for the house. Water connection fees required prior to water service being, service being granted for the ADU, and the ADU is required to have its own water meter. Based on our ability to recommend findings for the approval of all the discretionary permits required by the project, we're recommending that the Planning Commission approve application 24-12 by adopting Resolution 2024-15, which sets forth the findings for the project approval and includes the project conditions of approval. And that would conclude, conclude our report.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Kelly?
Is there any technical reason why the ADU has to be in that setback?
So there's a really limited flat area at the front, and it's kind of like a judgment call what a reasonable use of private-level outdoor space is. Originally, I asked them to flip it so the ADU is facing their, they would share the center space, and they declined to do that. So they put this forward, and there's always a different way to design something. I didn't think that this was too onerous, considering literally two, like a few doors up, there's already ADUs that are literally closer to the property line that were built relatively recently under some of the older ADU ordinances. They've changed them three times in three years, right? And all the setbacks changed. So it's not out, it's not that out of care. So it's not out, it's not that out of character, I think, to have a six-foot, they meet the minimum setback for a main structure, right? If someone wanted to build a house, it could literally be built right where that ADU is. So, but if they had met the ten feet, they wouldn't be in front of you for this variance for the ADU, right? But it would have decreased their usable flat area for the main house. So it's kind of like a juggling act, you know? It's like, what seems reasonable to one person may not seem reasonable. To me, it seemed reasonable.
And what is the code or regulation regarding the uh front fence?
Front fences are limited to four feet in height unless the Planning Commission grants one variance for six feet. Uh, you I would say that the majority of fence site variances are granted on corner lots, but there have been such conditions just like this where a six-foot fence has been allowed on a portion of a front property line. Rarely has the commission allowed the entire front of the property to be fenced, and I don't believe they're proposing that. They're proposing to just uh put the six-foot fence along, you know, just just to the driveway. So you could definitely say, oh, cut it back to just being in line with the building. Right? You could commission, if they felt it was overreaching, you could change the conditions, you could deny it.
Any other questions?
It's a discretionary permit, variance, the fence site variance is a discretionary permit.
Uh, just so I'm clear, in staff's experience, it sounds like lots like this that are sort of narrow lots in hillside areas typically ask for one, two, three variances, is that right?
Pretty typical.
And so a project like this that's asking for three, three-and-a-half variances, it's not something that's atypical and, you know, a result of the design. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Does the applicant want to present? Is the applicant here? They're online?
Hi, I'm Sutton Cunningham. I'm the applicant and designer of the project, and uh the concept that we were working on with this and why we're asking for these little variances is one idea is that uh we did not want to have the garage door facing the street, trying to create it. So you come in the driveway and turn, turn the building, but trying to make room for the parking. Um, and the fence is, as the design shows, is that it's not a full six-foot solid fence, it's four feet, and then it's open at the upper two feet of the fence, uh just trying to make some uh private space for the ADU um and give space for the the main residence. And being a thin lot, we don't have a lot of space, and that was where we're doing the the tight side setback on one side, try to give it so most of the open space for the people are on the side yards. You do have the full hillside, which goes up, and we're not touching that at all because of the uh slide potential and the trees and and the cost to go and build something up on the hill. Um, the site is challenging because of our soils reports were saying the best place to build is on the hill uh because that's where it's solid rock and stuff like that with the topsoil above it, but the the lower area is all, you know, uh fill from the old creek and everything, so the cost to putting in the big mat slab and which brings in more material that we have to bring in and everything in order to build on this flat site. So we're trying to make the best of it, working with everything else that's in the neighborhood. It's a smaller house, uh not trying to push everything to the max, keep it within the lot size and to accommodate an ADU. So we're trying to, you know, stay with the neighborhood and try to keep it, you know, so everybody's happy. The fences, you look along the street, there's a lot of fences that are very similar in size and height, and uh and that's about it.
And and could I just remind, because we have some new commissioners, that your Hill Area Residential Development Ordinance says hillsides in landslide hazard zones shall be left in their natural state as much as possible. So that wasn't, even though the soils report might, it might have been easier to build a foundation there, it it goes against the code.
Yeah, no, that's understood.
Yeah, okay.
Um, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any questions for the applicants? Commissioner Swift?
The fencing that you have that's um, it attaches to the ADU, correct, on that one?
Yes, it'll contain everything to the ADU.
Okay, and it's all wood?
Correct.
Okay. So a question that I would have when we look at home hardening and fire wa, home hardening and fire wise, fire travels on fences, and now a recommendation is that a wooden fence doesn't touch the structure, that perhaps you want to consider where that fence would turn in and touch the ADU, that that be a material other than wood? So that that breaks?
Understood, and you know, we would, I would, I would build it where you'd have a post and it would be separated. It depends on how far you feel the separation is, and the house is is all woo-eat compliant and fire-protected. Um, but we can take that into consideration on for the return coming in, yes.
Other questions?
Uh, are you able to share anything about the plans for the ADU? Is it uh to be rented out as a as a permanent rental, or is it for family? Is there anything you can share on that?
Uh, I think at the moment, it is possibly for family, um extended family, which would then, you know, turn into a rental unit.
Can I, can I share something that I heard at Ember Stomp? They were recommending that you actually, like, you could put a metal gate right there, but, you know.
To separate from the driveway there.
And that would, if it's if it's wide enough, that would create the break for fire.
Yeah, that's a, that's a nice idea.
Yeah.
Right.
Commissioner Kelly?
Are are you going to occupy this house?
Me? No. I live in San Antonio, so.
So you're developing it to sell it?
No, I am, I'm just the designer and I'm the applicant. The owner is here if he'd like.
No, okay, got it. So I misunderstood.
No.
Um, did you consider moving the ADU back that four feet?
We, it it, because the lot isn't, the flat space of the lot is not that deep, that by pushing it back, um, it takes everything right up to the porch of the house, and it makes the two buildings really tight, and it was trying to create the space that we we felt that we were trying to because of the the diagonal uh front setback, we were trying to make as much as we could. And with, you know, giving both both uh the main house and the ADU as much space as we could. We did look at uh putting the garage ADU in the back and push everything front, but then you end up using so much space for a driveway to get along the side to get to the back that it just basically took up all the open space on the property.
Mike?
Oh, sorry. Can you tell me the value of the height of the fence being six versus four?
It's uh privacy, just if if that's your, you know, the front of the house. I mean, it's it's solid at four feet, and then the upper is like a open lattice, so it's giving some privacy, but you're still, if you walk up to it, you'd be able to see in. So, and the neighbor's fence is at six feet also, so we're just kind of working along with the the street escape, but I guess you'd say.
Well, thank you. I have one more question for you. Um, because the garage is in the back, if I look at the plans.
No, the garage is in the front.
It's in the front, but it's, it's behind the unit.
Correct.
Um, so how do you get in there without moving the other two cars? Because they're standing right in front of it. How does that work?
Well, it's like a tandem parking. You you'd be able to drive in if if there was another car there, you'd have to move a car out.
Like both of them?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's it's hard to, you know, as as people have garages, whether they use them for cars or not, you know, it's but uh to be compliant, we put it in there so that hopefully people won't have cars.
Well, Mike, yes. Thank you.
And can I just remind you that uh the state law does not allow us to prohibit tandem parking when it involves an ADU?
Yeah, no, understood. This is like a triple parking. I was just curious, but I understand.
Well, it actually, the one on the side, the one that's closest to the east side property line can get in and out all the time for the main house, right? And the, if the one in the driveway is for the ADU, it can block in the second, the the covered space for the house, and that complies with state law. We aren't allowed to prohibit that. And then there are guest spaces in the public right away. I struggled with that, too, but it's.
Yeah, no, I understood. Thank you.
Took that control away.
One more question, Commissioner Swift?
Yeah, there was um a letter that was sent in by a neighbor and talked about wanting to limit the window-to-window visibility from the west-facing upstairs loft space room into their east-facing upstairs dining room. So can.
I'm just going to provide that to them because this came in when I was no longer at work, and I don't know that they saw it, so. I know I didn't see it till tonight, so.
And that's on the side where we're farther away from the property line? So this is on the side of the property where we're farthest away from the property line?
And it sounds like it's just for an attic window or something. You have to read it. I just gave you my copy.
God, make me read it.
Do you? I'm gonna borrow my glasses.
Well, I I haven't talked to the owner about this, and uh but we can look at it to to see what the ability is to, whether it's uh for them to come up with something between whether it's curtains or if it's windows and removal of windows or whatever, we can.
So I guess the question would be is if there's a concern with that one window um on the loft, and it's a clear window, would the applicant be willing to do something to that? Um, so it isn't a clear window.
Or you can make it a clear story window where the sill height is high.
Yes, we could, right, we might be able to do that to lift it up so it's, it doesn't come down to the, you know, four inches above floor level. I'd have, I'd have to look at the plans to to see, I mean, just seeing this here. But according to this is that the neighbors have have talked to the to the owner.
And I would just recommend that you include a condition that says something like that window either be clear story or be, you know, something agreed upon as a condition of approval to make sure that it actually gets done.
Right.
And so if I understand correctly, that window is more than twenty feet away from the property line on that side?
Yes.
Okay, so that is important to notice. No more questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, is there anybody in the public that'd like to comment on this application? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Jeff Mahaney. Uh, we live at fifty-four Wood Lane, which is a duplex. We're right across the street. Um, I first want to say thank you for doing something with this property. Uh, we've lived across the street for twenty-two years now. Uh, it was Jack's house originally, um, as an older gentleman when we moved in, and the neighborhood kind of took care of him, and uh his grass used to grow four feet tall, I think. And so we all, we all go out with our weed whackers and kind of help him out and keep the property clear. Then after he passed, um, we continued to clear the property even when it was between owners. So the street really cares about the property. There's a lot of great history there. Um, Jack used to, our girls were really little, tiny, little toddlers, and he used to always invite them over and always give them a little something. So anyway, there's a lot of great uh history there. Um, I think in general, I just want to say I really appreciate the approach and everything that they've come up with. I think that um as an architect, I deal with very difficult sites all the time. Setbacks, ADU laws changing every other week, I get it. And so I think it's more about like tolerance and like what makes sense here and what makes sense for this property. Um, the main house, I think, is fantastic, charming, fits in the neighborhood. I think the only concern I have, and really it's not that I'm rejecting the project or saying, I don't want this to happen. It's more just, I think it's an opportunity to talk about something, and you guys hold the gavel and make decisions on design review, and I think it's really a design review question. I think the garage care, um, ADU is a little bit out of character with the main house. Now, I know that the ADU laws, there's limitations on what you can do. I know you're, as long as you're within the height, the width, the setbacks, you're good to go. But I think considering they're asking for a variance, which I personally am fine with, I agree with the idea that they want to come forward, it makes sense to me. Um, I just find that sixteen-foot-high wall as you drive up to the house of the ADU to be very tall, and the fact that it's a shed roof, it just, it strikes me as not fitting with the house maybe as well as it could. So once again, I'm talking about this in the form of an opportunity to talk about it. I'm not saying I reject this idea. I just kind of want to put it out there that I think that it should be at least discussed at this level. Um, all of the other variances and requirements that they're asking for that are above and beyond what's allowed on this lot, totally behind it. I, too, with the parking, only because I live on Wood Lane, I'll just say to you, there's parking on one side of the street, so everybody parks on the other side of the street. Um, so having these parking spaces work as best they possibly can would be fantastic. Um, if it were me, I would rotate the garage and make it so that the driveway to the garage and the two parking spaces were all accessible and easy to get in and out from the street, but that's just me. Um, and in my mind, I think the, actually, if you look at the sun studies, the house originally had the garage as a gable roof. Am I misreading that? Okay. So I saw it as a gable roof, which, when I saw that, I thought, oh, well, that was in their mind at some point. Maybe it changed for some reasons I'm unaware of. I'm not trying to, you know, throw a wrench at anything. I just think that that instinct was the right instinct in a lot of ways. And for me, that's honestly the only thing that I could say that I think that the commission could, should consider, and I think would be a great opportunity, possibly. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak? Sure.
Yes, the we did look at it as a gable roof originally, and the the reason why we changed to a shed roof was for solar. Because we, the house is set back against the hillside. We have no natural light because of the trees, and the garage ADU is out there in the sun area. We wanted to put solar panels on, so having a shed roof is what accommodated that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else in the public who would like to speak? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
I see no hands online, Chair Jansen.
Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Um, who wants to start? May maybe I will start with pointing out something. Um, the reason that the fences are set at four feet in Fairfax is mostly because the front of the house is the public side of the house so that the public can see it from the street. That is what makes Fairfax such a nice built town. So it's actually the private side, so the. So it's actually the private side. So the, I know there are a lot of fences that are taller historically or built or added to. But if everybody would do that, then it would become a ghetto. You would be driving in a gutter between fences. And so that's a very important component of, and I presume that's why it came to bearing here. The second part, I think, as with all variances, we need to find an objective reason why it has to be the way it has to be. So that's something for the commission to consider. Usually I don't start, but with this case, that's why I point these general things out. Who wants to jump in? Commissioner Kelly?
Okay, so the setback variance, I I just need to, I guess, put out a sort of a general understanding of Wood Lane. I think that over time, we're unfortunately starting to see a wallification of Wood Lane. Wood Lane is one of the great walking streets in in town. It's so flat and it's on the avenue going up the hill for a lot of folks that walk and run past there. And I do myself. And I think it's unfortunate that we are getting so many tall fences that cut off the sort of visual communication between the houses that has had a long tradition, I think, on that road. Seeing, you know, activity in everybody's front yard that engages that street, which makes it such a special street. I think this ADU with the high point, particularly as the neighbor pointed out of the shed roof, it's not only over this setback four feet, but it's the highest point of the structure. So it's going to feel massive. That though there might be some other structures that are close to the road out there on Wood Lane, I don't think there's an example that's like this, what it's six feet from the setback as well as being the high point of the building. I think that that would be very unfortunate to do to Wood Lane and to the neighborhood and community. I don't know if there was a turn study done to get into that garage. It doesn't look to me like that garage is actually meant to be a garage. It that's just an observation. And I think that the the by setting the building that just that four foot difference into the setback rather than, you know, making that the yard between the house and the ADU, the difference between 11 feet and eight feet, that four feet should be given back to the community, in my opinion, rather than the little front yard. And then the fence is the same issue for me. That four foot fence versus six foot fence is a really big deal. It's a really big deal for the community. I understand that there's a privacy issue, but to me, that's that's part of the design of this building. If you wouldn't have put the all the windows looking out onto the road, you wouldn't need to have that fence. So it's part of the whole design of the the project to me has a problem.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just to echo onto some comments that I think have already been made. You know, theoretically, we were supposed to grant variances sparingly, right? They're not supposed to be something that we just issue out every project because the design looks best if it's X, Y, or Z. There needs to be a reason behind that. And I think with each of these variances, I get the reason behind it. I really do. But geez, I'm in I'm in real estate development. And so if a project architect came to me with a design and said, hey, to achieve this, we need three or four variances. I'd develop some heartburn. I would say, hey, maybe there's other things we can do to kind of limit the amount of ask beyond what's required of of the town, of the city, right? And so in light of that, you know, I started thinking about what is the low hanging fruit of these requested variances that seems like are pretty easy fixes to the design to limit the amount of variances that are being requested, right? And I think the fence seems like one of them to me, right? I mean, if if it's a front facing ADU in an area that requires or that limits fences to four feet and you're concerned about privacy, in my mind, the options are relocate the ADU or do a four foot fence and maybe achieve privacy with with other means like planting, you know, provided it's within a fire safe distance. So yeah, just just echoing on on comments already made and kind of wrapping things together. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Commissioner Newton? I see you're thinking.
Yeah, I am thinking. I it's so, it's, you know, I hear what Planner Neil has pointed out in terms of the difficulty of aligning the oddly you know, odd shape of the parcel, as it were, with the ADU and at the cost of the front setback and then sort of the added the added issue of the fence height. So I don't know. I I'm I'm thinking.
So I agree about the variances and when we should ask for them. And I agree with Commissioner Kelly on the four foot fence versus a six foot fence and what that means for the neighborhood and the neighborhood feel. And I don't think that just because there may be other fences on Wood Lane that are higher that we should continue down that road when we have an opportunity to not do that and to stay with the four foot fence in the front. So it is more of a neighborhood house. And I'm also concerned about the ADU in the setback.
Thank you. I mean, if I summarize it, I think I hear the same sentiment regarding the fence. And I think regarding the setback, it's very difficult to make a finding why you can do that. It's entirely new construction. And you can push it back four feet. So what would be, what would be if we would accept it? What would be the finding? Is there anybody that can make a finding that make that? That we don't request that, right? So you build a new building and.
Yeah, if you if you don't agree with staff's recommended findings and you don't think that you can make them, you can continue this and direct staff to come back with a resolution recommending denial of the project as proposed. You can ask the applicant if they're willing to consider redesigning it and continue if they indicate they're willing to. You can continue it and ask them to come back with some modifications. Right? Or you can take action tonight if you if you feel like you can make findings for denial. But you can also continue it, give them a chance to look at, you know, digest your concerns, direct staff to come back with another resolution that would recommend denial with suggested findings for that.
Could you make a resolution requesting that it be pushed back? You approved the projects, but you make two recommendations.
Well, they're gonna they're gonna listen to all your comments, right?
Right.
And you're going to indicate that you don't feel you can make the findings for the fence or the front setback variance. That seems pretty clear that unless I heard everyone wrong, it seems like everybody but Mimi, everybody but Mimi is on that, right?
We we hear from her again.
Yeah, they've heard your comments. You can ask them, are you willing to, you know, agree to a 90 day continuance? It doesn't have to be 90 days. If they get revised drawing to us, we can get them on the next agenda, right? But this, but the law has to the town and the applicants have to agree to a 90 day continuance. So we don't run afoul of the Permit Streamlining Act. They've heard your comments. They can respond by refusing to make any changes and then you'll take action, but you'll have a resolution in front of you with suggested findings for denial that staff feels will be supportable. Right? And then they have the opportunity to appeal if they're not happy with your decision.
Okay, all right. So thank you. Then last, last, last part, I'll come to you, Commissioner Newton, in a second. The last part I didn't hear any clear decision on is the combined setback. Each building itself, of course, complies, but because there's zigzag on the side, they don't. I don't think anybody in the commission sees that as a conflict. I didn't hear anything. That's that's not true. Okay.
I think typically, you know, I'm a big advocate for the combined side yard setback, but I do think that this lot configuration warrants it.
Thank you. Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, could we have a little bit more discussion about what I hear are the two issues that folks are concerned about, one being the I don't know, it sounds like the frontage appearance of the frontage of the ADU is a concern and maybe I just need more clarity about that. And then the other concern is the fence height, which I I understand. But if you guys could help me understand what your concerns about the garage, the moving, the the mass of the ADU, I don't quite understand what folks are concerned about with that. So I'd like to get some clarity.
I'll try to break it down for you. So we have the fence, we have the setback, we have the operation of the garage, and we have the architectural expression of the unit. The operation of the garage, I think, is on the owner. That doesn't concern us necessarily because.
Well, you could request a turning radius analysis by a traffic engineer.
Sure.
To prove that it actually you can turn, like if there's a car parked in the far space, you could actually, and no one's parked in the rest of the driveway, you could actually get into the garage.
No, you can always get in there, but it's just in reality, it's complicated. But so that's not of our concern. That is how the owner wants to use it. The fence is pretty simple because the code's straightforward about it and looks like we all agree. The setback requirement, I think we're still debating a little bit, although I do seek agreement. What we haven't talked about, and I think Commissioner Newton, is the architecture of the unit. We understand why the roof pitches up. That maximizes the solar area. But the expression of the unit is different from the main house, which I also had noticed. I was curious why the owner would be wanting to do that. I don't know to what degree the commission feels that needs to be addressed.
I kind of feel strongly in favor of maximizing the ability to use the solar, frankly. But but does that really get at Commissioner Kelly, for example, your concerns if if you aren't as concerned by the setback? And, you know, we all, maybe we can agree on the fence height. Is that what Chair Jansen expressed? Does that reflect your feeling as well?
I think that there's, as small as the ADU and garage might be relative to houses in the neighborhood, I think that it will feel massive on the sidewalk. I think that it's the highest point on the sidewalk and it does feel foreign. You know, doing a little visual survey up and down Wood Lane. There's nothing like it. It's definitely going to feel out of character. There's no other shed roofs out there. So the the architectural language of it will feel foreign and in your face, which I think is a mistake.
But we would want to encourage maximizing the solar panels, ability to use the solar on the right?
I think there's probably other ways to do it.
Okay.
So a question for Commissioner Kelly. So we've got the setback issue with that, that I think there's some agreement on that along with the fence as far as the design of the garage slash ADU in relationship to the house with changing the roof line. Do you still see some ability to, you know, and assuming that, you know, it's back further? You know, it's not in the setback. Do you still see some ability to take that and have it be more in concert with the design of the house? From your perspective?
Sorry, I'm just trying to get to the right drawing here. Just for the panels benefit, I'm looking at their sheet A7, which shows the shed in front of the house and the shed rendered so you can see the shape of it. And I'm calling the ADU the shed. I'm sorry. It's the shed roof of the ADU. You can really see how the character of the two is vastly different. It appears that the ADU is more of a modern language, I guess you could say, with no articulation to the windows, sort of abstract shapes rather than more of a vernacular craftsman home that sits behind it. So by nature, the ADU is purposely standing out, I would get, I would guess, which I think would be better for the neighborhood and community if that wasn't true, if they were of more the same character. I'm I'm seeing the ADU now, now that I even look at it closer, is really, it's really good to stand out. And in its current footprint on the site, I think it will be a hindrance to the community spatially. I think it'll be foreboding to the the community.
May I ask the question of Planner Neil? So our design review is for the house and ADU together?
I believe that when they request a variance, they open the they open the ADU up to the design review process. If they had proposed an ADU that complied with everything, right, then it's kind of there's language in the ADU code that says that the architecture of the ADU shall, the architecture and the color, I'll read it to you. It kind of makes it sound like it's supposed to match, but like we never get ADUs where the architecture matches the house. So I'm not exactly sure if they actually meant to use the word match. Let me read it to you because it's kind of. Okay.
Could you tell us what code version?
Yeah, I'm in I'm in town code section 17.048.010 F 9 A. The materials and colors of the exterior walls, roof and windows and doors must match the appearance and architectural design of those of the primary dwelling. Materials and colors of the exterior walls, roof and windows and doors, the colors and materials must match the appearance and architectural design of the primary dwelling. That's what the language says. And.
Yes, so that's not the case. These are two different buildings. I think that's the point you're making, right?
Well, okay, so can I ask another question, please? Planner Neil, if the applicant was to come back with the ADU meeting, what would the what would the standards they need to meet to avoid our review of design? Would they have no setback variance and that's?
They would. They would submit for an ADU ordinance, right?
Yeah.
I mean, an ADU application. I mean, an ADU application, which would not require a public hearing and it would be administratively reviewed by Kara Spencer, who's the staff person that processes our ADUs. So it would be up to her to take that section and see whether she, you know, felt like, and the garage, the garage, the garage, does the garage have to match the architecture? I mean, it's.
But if they met the setback requirement and if they met the fence height requirement, they wouldn't need a variance from us.
That's right. That's right. They would not. It would be processed by staff.
They would be able to do their shed roof the way they wanted to, basically. Is that right?
I think it would depend on the planner reviewing the application.
What they interpreted as match.
Yeah, I mean, is it just the slope? Is it just, you know what I mean? And I, I think, you know, I, this is what hit home, actually, when Commissioner Kelly said that they're taking the sixteen foot high portion of this building is going to be in the required setback. If they, if they flipped it, so the, you know, the portion that was only eight, eight feet tall was in the setback, it might not be so in your face. But I also think the way they've done the drawing makes it look like the house and the ADU are closer together than they really are. So it's, it's, I'm telling you, when you have, when you have these, all these different types of structures, I mean, literally, we do have an ADU down the street that actually is closer. It may not be sixteen feet in height, though. It's right up against the fence, right? So it's, it's kind of a judgment call. I, I felt that I could make the findings for this ADU, even though I originally asked them to flip it. I wanted the garage closest to the street and I don't even, I don't remember if it had a shed roof back then, but.
Go ahead, Shaq Kelly. Yeah, go ahead.
We go through a number of generations back and forth. You guys have the authority to ask them if they're willing to continue it for a redesign, right? Or you can direct us to come up with findings for denying the project as proposed. You, you have the authority.
Sorry, I just, I want to just point out one more thing. I think there's no solar panels on the, on the house.
That's right. They could put it on one roof.
Solar panels on the house, if that was really the issue.
That's correct.
Commissioner Swift?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've got a, a new build. We've talked about the fence height. We've talked about the shed being in the setback. We've talked about that not being, that building not being, having the same architectural character as the main building. I think those are, and possibly with a shed roof, they could still address a matching character. But those, to me, and I think there's some consistency here for most of us, that those are the three issues that we have concerns with. So I think we need to ask the applicant if they're willing to come back.
Yeah, are they willing to agree with the commission to a ninety day, a continuance not to exceed ninety days to redesign the project, taking your comments into consideration?
Yeah, that's understood. Before we go there, anybody else wants to weigh in? Does the applicant want to come forward and address our question? So to summarize, the question before you is if you are willing to extend this for ninety, maximum ninety days to reconsider the fence height, the four feet that you're encroaching in the front setback, the expression of the unit and garage, meaning that it wants to match more with the existing home.
Yeah, we definitely, we are willing, I mean, the, the fence height, that's not a problem. The moving the building, we could move the building. I'd prefer to only move it so it's eight feet instead of ten feet, but if it would work better to be the ten feet, then we're able to do that. The, you know, when you start getting into the, the solar aspect is because the rest of the house is tucked under the trees and you don't get any, we're trying to, you know, be green, get as much solar opening as we can. And originally, we did have a gable roof and by having a gable roof, you lose half of your solar ability. And so we, we were trying to maximize the solar and, and definitely we understood. That's why we started with the gable roof. And, but being a smaller building, and that's the other reason why we can't flip the building because then the roof is going only towards the east.
Right.
Yeah. So, yes, to answer your question, yes, we are willing to adapt the building to keep the continuance and hopefully it won't be ninety days.
Okay, that's good. Then let's do that. And I understand your last comment. I think the, it's, it's also the architectural expression. It's not just the roof. We understand that there is a lot of things that are happening there. Okay, good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does that need a motion or is the continuance hereby?
No, you should.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, yeah, to continue.
Want to make a motion?
The motion is to continue the application for a period not to exceed ninety days and, and direct the applicant to address the comments that they've heard on the project redesign.
So moved.
And we should specify, I think, what those comments are.
Comments are the current application building height should be considered to be reduced at the front setback. Possibly changing to a hip roof rather than shed. Secondly, the architectural.
If I may briefly interrupt you, I believe that is not what we discussed. We should revisit this.
I thought that was what you said.
No, I think the three things we talked about were.
Putting it back.
Moving it out of the setback, the fence height, and then having the shed be more in character architectural design with the house.
Correct. And, and Commissioner Kelly, you, you were, the, the recommendations you make are correct, but that's not a finding. That is up to the creativity of the architect. So that's why I interrupted you. Apologies.
I think that's specific enough.
Did you like what she said?
Yeah.
So I move that. You, you've got the motion and.
Is it, you have it down? Yeah, okay. So Commissioner Snaps making, making the motion? Anybody second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go. So Newton?
Hi.
Swift?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Petroni?
Hi.
Chair Jansen?
Hi.
And with that, we will proceed. I'm not sure you can appeal this. Can you appeal this? I presume so. You can probably appeal this.
No.
No? Okay. I was thinking there for a second.
A continuance isn't an action.
A continuance is a continuance. Okay, good.
Yes.
We will proceed with our next item on the agenda, and that is the short-term rental, if I am correct. Considerations for recommendations to the town council regarding the short-term rentals. Do we have? Do we have staff reports on that?
Yes, I have a staff report on this item. So I'm going to share my screen and I have a PowerPoint to help us go through it. Right, so we basically adopted regulations a couple of years ago to regulate short-term rentals. But we really haven't started aggressively enforcing any of the regulations until earlier this year. And so as we've been doing that, we've been getting feedback from the, from the folks that have been trying to rent out their short-term rentals or not being able to register because they can't meet certain requirements. So we are bringing this back through the process to see if the town is willing to consider any changes to the current regulations. So that's basically why we are here tonight. The town council would like to get a recommendation from the planning commission on any potential changes. And it's partially in the zoning ordinance and partially not in the zoning ordinance. It's kind of in two different sections of the municipal code. So this, I'm not sure how well that shows up on the screen. This is just the universe of short-term rentals. This is ones that are currently active and also a bunch that are inactive that have just come up on the, the listing service over the past few years. We use a company called Deckard to kind of find short-term rentals because the hosting sites like Airbnb are not forthcoming about where they're located. So we have to use the special service in order to identify short-term rentals and then to be able to send them a letter to ask them to register. So this is, and this is a guess because, you know, we're using this third-party service to identify short-term rentals. So this, this, we think this is pretty close, but we could be missing short-term rentals with this. So we have ten short-term rentals that are currently licensed. They've applied online. They've, they've signed up. They're in the system as a licensed short-term rental. We have approximately twenty-nine out there that are unlicensed, that have not registered. And there's sixteen that we are pretty sure in Fairfax, but we can't identify them based on the information on the listing service. And then there's a bunch of other, like you'll notice that graphic that I showed on the previous page, there's a number that we think that are inactive and there's about a hundred that are inactive and thirty of those are unidentified. So why do we regulate short-term rentals? There's a number of jurisdictions that have, around the world, actually, that have started to, to ban short-term rentals, like New York, Barcelona, there's been a lot of newspaper stories. There's a couple of local examples of folks that just banned them outright for a variety of reasons. We, the staff doesn't think that's necessary in Fairfax, just because there's really not that many of them. And we don't think they pose too much of a, a problem as we'll go through. But we think there is some need for some regulation. And for these reasons, to prevent unfair competition with commercial lodging establishments, they're basically a hotel use in a residential area, so, and they're competing with a potential other lodging uses. They, we also believe that they, if they are going to operate as a lodging use, they should pay a hotel user tax, like, like hotel would have to. And the other reason to regulate them is we want to prevent the removal of units from the long-term rental market. We, we have a number of short-term rentals which are being used as short-term rentals, which could easily be used for long-term rentals, which would actually provide a housing unit for somebody that works in a coffee shop or somewhere else. So there's a little bit of that going on. And then there's also important to regulate short-term rentals just to reduce impacts. I, we don't have, that I know of, any cases of disruptive short-term rentals in town, but that has been an issue in other communities where they don't have parties or people rent out the short-term rental specifically to have a big party. So we just want to have some regulations to prevent that from happening. It's not currently happening, but we just don't want that to be a, a common occurrence in Fairfax. So this is kind of the range of, with short-term rentals, it's unlike other things, there's, there's, we, we don't have to allow them at all. So the, the city has, or the town, excuse me, has a lot of flexibility or we can not regulate them at all and just let them exist. Or what we can do is, and so this is, this is, shows kind of that spectrum. So if you have an outright ban where you don't allow short-term rentals anywhere within the jurisdiction, you're protecting the housing supply, but you don't have any revenue potential. And it's a huge code enforcement cost because you constantly have to chase the short-term rentals around and tell them that they can't operate. But, and you are protecting neighbors from impacts. On the other side, if you don't re- regulate them, that, see, I want to see what I wrote here. If you don't have any regulation, they could be allowed everywhere, no registration required. That would disrupt your housing supply for long-term rentals. You would have zero revenue potential because you're not registering short-term rentals at all. You wouldn't have high code enforcement costs because you'd just be doing it on, enforcing on a complaint-only basis. And you'd have some tourist impacts on neighborhoods. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to get something in the middle where we allow some short-term rentals if they can meet the regulations in the code, like have the parking not be investor-owned, that type of thing. And then have some regulations to protect neighbors and require the registration. So that has, we have some, a little bit of revenue and we're, we're not really, I should say, the town is not interested in revenue potential for this, except to just kind of cover some of our code enforcement costs. It does cost about nineteen thousand dollars a year just to have the service to identify the short-term rentals. So we kind of want to recoup some of that cost, so. But we're, this is not intended as a big moneymaker for the town. I just want to say that upfront. And so anyway, so we, we think that it's a good idea to allow some short-term rentals, but, but not just open the door wide for everything to be a short-term rental. So what we've discovered is as a result of our regulations, which may be a little too strict, that only a fraction of the currently listed short-term rentals can legally register. You know, as I mentioned before, there's this trade-off between protecting the rental housing supply and then allowing short-term rentals. There's a number of folks that have, which you may hear tonight in testimony that, you know, they, they know they're retired, they need some extra income, you know, what's the big deal if they go away for the weekend and they want to rent out their house as a short-term rental? Or if they have an extra room, why can't they rent that out as a short-term rental? So those are all, those are, those are fair comments. So there's that balance between protecting the long-term rental housing supply and allowing the short-term rentals. So some of the regulations that have prevented folks from registering is not all Fairfax homes have the parking. Like there's a certain number of parking spaces required for a house, for example, and then you have to have one extra for a short-term rental. And so a lot of homes do not even have the minimum required in the code now. And so then they're unable to do the short-term rental. There's also a, a number of non-hosted short-term rentals where the host lives in San Francisco. I'm just picking on San Francisco. That's not necessarily the case. They could live in, you know, Wyoming, for all we know, where the host is not on site, but they're offering the short-term rental. There's other ones that are where the, the host is, like I mentioned before, just away for the weekend or it's an extra, extra room. So. And so this is kind of a little, and then we have some cost recovery, as I mentioned before, we, you know, we're monitoring them. We have code enforcement administrative costs. We do have some potential sources of revenue. The breakdown in costs is our monitoring software is about nineteen thousand per year. Our enforcement is variable. Right now it's fairly low. We're just sending letters out. And then the revenue depends on the number of registrations and paying, payment of hotel user tax. We think we could probably easily get to thirty-four thousand in revenue if we were to register about twenty short-term rentals and actively collect the user tax and that would probably balance out our expenses versus the revenue. We wouldn't, we might be still losing a little bit in terms of code enforcement costs, but we'd be recouping some of the, some of the expense. So this, these are the current regulations. They're only allowed in single-family properties only. It must be the primary residence of the person renting it out. So this is like an extra room where they're away for the weekend. It's not intended as like, you know, you, you, if you have a duplex on the property and you're just in one side of the duplex, you currently, under the current regulations, you wouldn't be able to rent out the other side of the duplex. And then also you can't rent out an ADU if it's built after 2020, and that's actually a. And that's actually, I believe that's a state law requirement. But if it's before 2020, you can. And we only allow them in these four zones. The RS 7.5, RS 6, and the UR 7 and UR 10. So it's kind of all the low-density and medium-density residential zones. This is one where we actually have a number of short-term rentals are in the RD 5.5 to 7. And we have one that's in a commercial zone that's trying to register and they're, they're just single-family homes that just happen to be located in those zones. So that's one of the changes that we're proposing. So there's also the additional parking space required for the short-term rental eliminates a surprising number of folks from, eliminates a number of homes from being able to register because they don't have the parking. So that's the data, 10 approved, nine denied. And a bunch, then, as I mentioned before, there's 30 that have, have not registered yet, but and we're not saying they won't register or they're ignoring us, it's just that we just, we've only sent a second letter recently, so we haven't, people haven't maybe been given the full opportunity to register yet. So we're not trying to call anybody out as scuffballs just, just yet, so. Give them a little bit more time. And this is the breakdown, there's there's three properties that can't register for a bunch of different reasons. It's either a duplex, it's not a primary residence, and it's not allowed in the zone, and they don't have the parking. There's these three, we think that would be a reasonable change to, you know, if it's a single-family house or in these particulars in any zone, we then you'd be treating everybody more equally. We think that would be an okay change. This is the universe of possible changes. You could allow short-term rentals in any dwelling unit type. So you, you know, even if it's like a condo, you could potentially open up condos to be used to short-term rentals. You know, an apartment, like if the renter was away for the weekend and they had permission of the owner, they could use their apartment as a short-term rental. And these are just the range of possibilities, we're not necessarily recommending these. Do not require additional parking, allow for investor-owned short-term rentals, allow for duplexes to be rented as short-term rentals. Do not allow short-term rentals in any ADU. So this is what we would recommend as changes. We would allow short-term rentals in any dwelling unit type as long as they were being rented out by the occupant of the dwelling unit. Allow the short-term rentals in any zone. And then make it a little bit more restrictive to not allow short-term rentals in any ADU. And we think this would be consistent with kind of protecting the housing supply. If you have an ADU, there's no reason you couldn't rent that out as a long-term rental versus a short-term rental. And then keep the following regulations in place. Keep the additional parking space required. Maintain the residency requirement where you must live on the property. And you must occupy the unit offered as a short-term rental. And prohibit short-term rentals in unpermitted construction. That may go without saying, but you would be surprised. And also prohibit them in RVs, tents and yurts. Again, you'd think that that would go without saying, but you would be surprised. And then also structures that are not suitable for habitation such as sheds. So the next steps would be for we've, I've prepared a resolution for you to adopt tonight if you wish to forward this on to the town council with a staff recommendation. Or you could also ask us to consider other items or change our recommendation and we could consider that and bring it back. And then we would take it to the town council for consideration after that. And that is my presentation and I'm open for questions and comments.
Questions for staff.
What is the current rate of the HUT? The hotel user tax?
It's 10%.
10%. Has staff given any consideration to potentially raising that as a way to further recoup costs of code enforcement?
I think that might be the maximum. I mean, I can investigate that, but I think that, I think we might be at the maximum.
Because I know, I, I guess I'm a little bit confused because most, most municipalities call that TOT, right? Transitory Occupancy Tax?
Correct, yes.
And so I do know that there are Marin cities and towns that have a TOT rate that is higher than 10.
Oh, okay. So we can, we can look into that then. I thought we were bumping up there towards the roof, but.
And then another question I had is, has staff given any consideration to a, a different approach to regulation in that instead of limiting, well, in addition to limiting the, the types and then, and you know, additionally providing all the requirements that you went through. Have you thought about limiting the number of actual calendar days that a unit can be rented? Does that make sense? So for example, in San Francisco, I believe it's 60 calendar days is the hard cap on how many nights in a calendar year a unit can be rented. And so what that does is that it de-incentivizes the use of Airbnb as, you know, a cash cow that, you know, gives a person more money than otherwise renting to a, a long-term tenant, right? But it still allows the flexibility that a lot of people depend on to help offset their mortgage costs, right?
Let's bring that to the discussion.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
We're in staff questions. Yeah, sure.
Fair.
Thank you. And then my only other question, I'm sorry to continue for a little bit more. Is the Fairfax in the only current hotel in town or is another one that I'm not aware of?
It's the only one.
It's the only one, okay. And we, do we know how many rooms they have by chance?
Not off the top of my head.
And that is the end of my questioning. Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
I have a question.
Commissioner Newton?
We have quite a lot of multi-unit apartment buildings in town. And I don't know anywhere their owner occupied. And it sounds like one of the people who tried to register was rejected. I think at least one rejected because they were not owner-occupied. And and so, yeah, I mean, it's just a really hard balance between making sure we have as much affordable housing stock as we can get. And at the same time, acknowledging that the ability of people to stay in town, you know, if their homes are being renovated, if, you know, they have a baby and their grandparents come into town, you know, they're just, there are so many limits. I'm just wondering if we had considered the idea of more than single-family, more than duplex, but you know, maybe multi-unit allowances. So that's my question.
Yeah, well, just to clarify, we, you don't have to be the owner to rent out the short-term rental. Like you're, if you're renting a house and you're the permanent resident of that house, then you could rent it out as a short-term rental if you had owner's permission. So that would be allowed. So that same concept could apply to like a condominium or an apartment where if you were the the renter and you wanted to go away for the weekend and you had owner permission, then you could put your apartment out as a short-term rental. That, if we change the code to allow that, and that would be a discussion point if, if we were willing to do that. But right, right now you can only do a short-term rental in a single-family house in those four zoning districts.
Right, and you're asking us to consider a recommendation to the council where we would go beyond that limitation.
Correct, yep.
And I'm just wondering, but you're still not going beyond a duplex? I mean, are we talking about, I mean, so what you're saying is a renter in a multi-unit building could take advantage of the short-term rental option?
Commissioner Newton, we're still in staff questions. Let's bring that to the discussion.
Okay, but I was asking.
Probably comments first.
Yeah, but I'm trying to ask staff about, well, okay, sure, whatever.
Apologies. We'll come back to it. Other questions for staff? Commissioner Swish.
So hopefully the PowerPoint will be uploaded.
Yeah, I think it already is.
Cool. In your PowerPoint, how did you determine that potentially 96 short-term rentals were out there but inactive?
Oh, just the, the service that we uses has, has tables of all of the short-term rentals that they've identified on VRBO and Airbnb and other places. And then, so that, that's where it comes from, is from the, from the service, from Deckard.
So by inactive, you mean that they're registered with services, but we don't know if they're actively being rented?
At some point, they signed up with Airbnb
Right.
and VRBO and did a short-term rental, but that could have been a year ago or more.
Okay. So the staff report talks about the current average occupancy rate is 60 days. Is that per unit, is that overall from what the data they collected?
Yeah, that's what they have on the, again, with Deckard, they kind of, they, they count how many days that each short-term rental is being rented for in a calendar year. And I think that's where that comes from, yeah.
So that's an average
An average.
of the ones that are active.
Correct, yeah.
So there's a high and a low to that as well.
Yep.
Of the 10 short-term rentals that have registered, are any of them ADU, JDUs created before 2020?
I would have to double-check. I don't think so. I could, I could, I'd have to double-check on that one.
Because to your point where ADUs and JDUs were prohibited from being short-term rentals by the state, that was in 2020. But in actuality, Fairfax has had that prohibition since 2017. So I was curious with that, if there were any that were before 2020.
Yeah, I would have to go, I'd have to research that one.
And you mentioned that some of the property owners are choosing to list residential units as STRs instead of renting them out on a longer-term basis. Can you address that?
Yeah, I think any of the any of the duplex units could obviously be rented out on a long-term basis. Those would be the primary source of that. So then there's others that have not registered at all that we know are investor-owned, which could be rented out on a long-term basis.
But the duplex units currently are not allowed to be rented out?
Correct.
And you talk about just ADUs, but you don't address JDUs. So should I assume that when you mentioned ADUs, you're throwing JDUs in there as well?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And you've looked at STRs that haven't registered, that may be able, maybe eligible to register assuming owner occupancy and availability of parking. Are these in the existing allowable zones? Or are you looking at that across the town?
It's, it's, it's really just a, it's really just an approximation. It's probably across the town, I would say. We, there is a lot of interest in the, the RD 5.5 to 7. And those are, many of those folks are trying to register and can't, so.
Okay, those are my questions for now.
Go ahead.
Easy one. What's the definition of an investor property? Someone that doesn't live in Fairfax, but is is renting out the house either as a long-term rental or a short-term rental?
Well, it's not that the person doesn't live in Fairfax, it's that the person doesn't live in the unit that they're renting, right?
Yes, I guess, I, I would take that correction, yes.
So to that question, that could be anybody. It doesn't have to be an investor like we look at invest, you know, companies and that type of thing. So you're just saying that it's a person that doesn't, that may own the property.
Correct.
Could live here elsewhere, but doesn't live in the property.
Correct.
So it could be a landlord theoretically, right?
Any other questions for staff? Okay, then I presume we'll have people in the audience that'd like to talk to this item. Please go ahead.
Through the chair, if I may.
Yes.
We did expect a large number of audience, so I do have the timer set to three minutes now. And I'll just point out to the audience if they don't know where it is. I do have something there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Alexander, I live on Taylor Drive. My wife and I are one of the nine families who have pursued registration but do not qualify. We were denied for insufficient parking. We have three legal but non-conforming spaces. Many modest houses like ours don't have 57 feet of parking, total feet of parking, which may partly explain why over 70% of STR operators are choosing not to pursue registration with a town, according to the staff report. The current STR parking requirement privileges more affluent property owners with more land and longer driveways and larger yards. Our nightly rates are modest, less than half the average rate. And we serve other modest households nearby with no room to put up visiting relatives. Our typical guest, for example, is one couple occasionally with one child. Our STR is unsuitable for a long-term rental. It's not an ADU, but a portion of our own house without a kitchen. We can't afford to install one plus additional plumbing and electricity. Like many other STR owners, we're retired and depending on our Airbnb to keep living here. Based on our previous rental earnings, the town would earn about 2,200 a year from our HUT plus registration and business license fees. We bring business to the local stores, especially restaurants, since we have no kitchen to rent. Kara Spencer, the associate planner, explained that if we rented our rooms long-term, the parking requirements don't apply. This seems arbitrary. Now our rooms are only booked some of the time, whereas a long-term tenant would park here 365 days a year, impacting our neighborhood more. Many of our guests don't even bring a car because downtown is only two minutes' walk away, or their families live close by. Our legal but non-conforming spaces can accommodate both of our own cars inside our garage. And each one fits in our driveway without blocking the sidewalk. And that's the third space which Airbnb guests use. We want to keep contributing to the local economy and living in Fairfax, but enforcing the 57 total feet parking requirement rigidly would make that impossible for STR owners like us. We're not asking to change the STR requirement for an, of an additional space. Only that currently functional, legal but non-conforming parking spaces be allowed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
So Linda Berry, 192 Scenic Road, and I was denied, I applied because of the parking restrictions. I am a single person, I have one car, I park my car in front of my house. I would have to spend $100,000, which is impossible to create a parking platform or some kind of a garage, even more money, which is my or some kind of a garage, even more money, which is my retire. I'm a senior citizen. I'm on low income. I'm disabled. And I have a vision problem. I am currently working, but don't know how long I'll be able to work. So for you to continue to deny me would be to disallow me from continuing to make money to support myself. And the my unit also, as he said, is not appropriate for a long-term rental. It's a bathroom within adjoining room, and there's a little kitchenette in the corner. Again, I cannot afford to make it into a kitchen. There's a microwave and a kettle that people can use. So one person comes or two people come. They always come in one car. There are two places to park in front of my home on the right of way. Those people go downtown and they spend money in town. So if you were to deny me, even though he says that you're not interested in the income, I've heard I live on a very little-traveled road, Upper Scenic Road. I don't know if any of you were here, but decades ago, we were gravel road and we petitioned the town and finally we had a cooperative effort with the town putting money in and the neighbors putting money in so that we could pave the road. And so it's very low-traveled road. There's no problem that anybody's ever had parking in front of my home who's rented. And I he as he says, it's half the price. My virtual assistant, who currently works for me, looked at all the prices of the rentals in Fairfax, and mine is the lowest amount of money. Neighbors also have used it when they had children coming in town and couldn't put them up. So it's helping people who don't have a lot of money to come to Fairfax and to spend money in Fairfax. And also, I'm registered with Airbnb, so Airbnb, I've already spoken with them. They would handle the hotel tax and send it directly to the town. So there wouldn't be any issues if you're not getting the money from the rentals. And my rental property is popular. People come for one or two nights or occasionally they stay longer. So I am asking for a variance, an exception on the parking requirement so that I may continue to support myself as I grow older and more feeble and support the town of Fairfax in its desires to continue to provide services to our local citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Gianni Richards, and I've lived in Fairfax for since 1998. It's interesting. I've lived here forever, but I've never come to one of these before. So I just want to say I'm pleasantly surprised. Like, this is a room full of nice people. I was mocking up this tribunal and the probation hearing. Anyway, it's really cool to be here and I really get that that you're hearing our concerns. So first, I want to echo what a couple of the folks have just said. We bought a duplex in 2001, 2002. My wife and I raised our kid there. We love Fairfax. We are the dyed-in-the-wool. I hope I take my last breath in this town. This is an incredible place to be. So we have a duplex, and we bought it because it's a duplex. So we and for a long time, we had it long-term rented. And then that changed and the lady moved out. In the last number of years, it's been short-term, which has actually worked better. Our son comes home from college. He needs a place. We have lots of friends, lots of family. Logistically, it's the best way to go until the letter arrived a few months ago. And I was like, register? I gladly register. I thought I'm going to be a good citizen. And my wife was like, well, then you'll be on the radar. I'm like, look, come on, let's get this done. So I filled it out with all the stuff. And two weeks later, I get a letter that said, we've after close consideration, you've been declined. And I was like, they must have the wrong guy, the wrong unit. So I called, because I didn't want to do the back and forth emails. I wanted to speak with a human, and I've never spoken with any of you guys before. So I called and I said, well, who should I speak to? They go, well, talk with Barbara Kohler. She's the mayor. I said, great. So I met with Barbara. We had lunch in Fairfax. And she explained to me this new ordinance, which we hadn't known about, right? It kind of happened a couple of years ago, but I guess it's being rolled out now. I never voted on that. I didn't know what it was about, but now I'm learning about it. So she told us about that. We told us about our situation, and we kind of left it amicably like, well, there's not much you can do until maybe November, things will change. So I'm looking at the clock. Here are my observations. On the one hand, as short-term renters, we are incredibly disincentivized for renting long-term, and here's why. We've all heard the stories, and I my neighbor, who has the identical duplex as myself, had suffered one of these stories, which was he had a tenant four or five years ago that didn't move out, and he went through months and months of legal financial stuff. It was a it was a nightmare. I think we all know what I'm talking about here. At that point, I was talking to him every day. He says, Gani, I can't get these guys out. I will never want to rent my place long-term. It's and now, from what I read of the provisions, they're even more embedded. And I'm like, I can't do that. So on so on the one hand, we can't do long-term. And then now, because we're duplex, we can't do short-term. So we're like, this is not the spirit of Fairfax. This is not the vibe of this town. It's just it doesn't feel right. So I don't know what to do, but I wanted to come just for the first time in 26 years and say, hello, I'm a concerned citizen. I'm so happy that I got to echo, you know, y'all. And so I guess in conclusion, I would, I don't know what the legal word is, move or motion, or please do something that lets duplex owners, owner occupied. I don't live in Dubai as some anonymous corporate. I'm the dude who lives upstairs.
Can you wrap it up?
Yeah. So thank you for my long-winded. It's great to meet everybody. And I hope we can do the right thing.
Thank you for sharing. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Richard Pedemonte, and I we have a family compound at 30 and 34 Baywood Court. And I just wanted to give you an example of the kind of ideal short-term short-term rental. And I think that's what we have. We have an extra bedroom and bathroom. And when we remodeled the house, we thought, we're going to keep this bedroom and bathroom for for guests and family members. And indeed, three or four weeks out of the year, out of town, family members stay there. So that kind of precludes us wanting to rent it out long-term. In addition, it doesn't have cooking facilities, another reason why we wouldn't want to rent it out long-term. But since and we have more than enough adequate parking, so that's not an issue. So I'll give you a little example of who our guests have been. I mean, this is our eighth year providing short-term rental in Fairfax. And we have four or five different groups that come to weddings every year at Deer Park and other places. We have my daughter's a nurse, so she contacts some traveling nurses who who stay for three or four weeks at a time. We have two of them, so that's eight or nine weeks out of the year. We have a lot of grandparents who come in to help take care of their kids. We also have locals who are doing a remodel or in some transitional situation. And so we feel like we're providing a service to the town and providing, bringing in customers for our local businesses and our restaurants. I don't see a downside to it. I just know that if we weren't able to do it short-term, we wouldn't we wouldn't be able to rent at all because we want to have our family access the place for holidays and Christmas and vacations and things like that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
How are you doing? I'm Michael Sexton, a duplex owner since year 2000 here in Fairfax. When the first Airbnb first came out, we did long-term, excuse me, short-term rentals in the other unit that we have. But in addressing this, I'm going to argue very strongly for the least restricted, the most permissive STR regulations available. And hopefully, I can kind of demonstrate why it's so critical to have short-term rentals here in Fairfax. I have a lot of quibbles with the staff report, but primarily, let's go down one. I want to ask you, what kind of problem are you trying to solve? I mean, what is the pervasive problem with short-term rentals? If you look at the staff report, it says we're competing legally with established commercial lodging. You know, there is one hotel in Fairfax. When I was renting out that other unit back in 2017, our rates were lower than the Motel 6 in San Rafael. I mean, there is no rental, you know, hotel rental here in Fairfax. I mean, where's the nearest one? It would be in San Rafael, other than the one downtown Fairfax. I think if you had a permissive STR regulations, you would find that people would gladly pay the transit occupancy tax or the HUT. That's not an issue. Airbnb takes it completely out. You're competing with everybody else. That's not an issue. In fact, the staff writer here, this gentleman here, was saying that, oh, revenue is not concern. You know, revenue is a concern for the town of Fairfax. We need all sources of revenue. STRs provide a great source of revenue. If we had 100 of those in Fairfax, like this gentleman's saying, that's not registered, not active right now, we have a tremendous amount of HUT revenue in addition with all those people, you know, going to the downtown restaurants, spending money there. I just want to kind of go over some of the other points here. Removing long-term rental units. Well, you know, if that's a consideration, then I guess it's a height of hypocrisy for this town. Because the biggest factor in terms of removing long-term rentals from the city is the extra rent control ordinances. I mean, it's just it's mind-boggling that you're saying, oh, yeah, a couple of STRs are going to affect that. No, I'm sorry. It's rental control. But let's go over who is staying at the STRs. Our first person that stayed in the unit was what you call a remodel refugee. They stayed for at least 45 days. They were remodeling their place in Fairfax and needed a place to stay. You know, that's would go over that 60-day limit if we had a limitation on that in one person right there. You know, STRs provide a critical valuable service to people coming in. In addition, let's say we've had, I don't know how many parties we've had, wedding parties that are having a wedding over in Deer Park Villa. I mean, this provides critical housing that's local. They can't all stay at that little hotel down there. In addition, we've had grandmas and grandpas, you know, staying for holidays who want to stay a week or two weeks to visit their kids. It's critical to have that in the neighborhood. We had one, you know, oftentimes the person is basically up the street, you know, the family is up the street, and they want to stay close. They want to bring their grandkids down to stay in our place overnight, a couple of nights. It's really convenient and really a very neighborly thing to do. But if you look at, again, every
Can you make a conclusion? You're out of time.
I certainly will. Well, I want to argue specifically for the opening up of duplexes. Again, I live in one side, rent out the other. I would love to be able to. I don't do that now. I have a long-term renter in there, but I want to have that option open. Also, so I really want to, I disagree. I want to agree with the possible change for STRs for any type of dwelling, especially in the apartment complex and duplex, which was recommended. But I also want to argue for the other one down here in the duplex, the number two. The second unit possible change is to allow
You need to make a closing statement.
One sec. Any unit duplex you use as
I have no seconds anymore, sir.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Jeff Mahaney, 54 Wood Lane. We own 5254 Wood Lane, the duplex. I can pretty much mimic most of what I've said, so I won't repeat most of it. As a resident of 22 years, going on 23 years, being a professional in the area, both an architect and a restaurant owner, we used to own 123 Bellinas, which is at 123 Bellinas before we closed. I can just tell you from my personal experience, forget the fact that I'm currently doing short-term rentals. I've always had long-term rentals. I've already got a duplex that's legal non-conforming. I already can't change it. It's restricted. Now we're talking about more restrictions. I would like to speak much more theoretically about who we are as Fairfax. I don't personally understand why we're trying to fix something that really isn't broken, why we're trying to over-restrict something that is needed in this community. I can't tell you how many people come to our Airbnb and never get in their car because we're 50 yards away from the Deer Park Villa. They can barely walk home, but they make it to our little place, right? They walk downtown to go to dinner. I know they did because when I ran 123 Bellinas, most of the people that I met that I did not know because they didn't live here, they weren't from Marin, they were staying in an Airbnb in Fairfax. So I would just beg you to really, really think about this. Don't fix what ain't broke, and please, please, please don't over-regulate it. It's not in the spirit of this town. It's not why I moved here. It's not why I've passed up opportunities to build houses on other properties in other parts of Marin for myself and my family. It's why I chose to open a business outside of my architecture practice to be connected to the community. That's why we did a restaurant, didn't make a penny doing it. I did it because of this town. I really, really think it would be a huge mistake to take this too far. I'm just an advocate for minimizing these requirements and stop the rejections on properties that are not getting formal complaints. A lot of them are duplexes where we live next door, and the people there are not only well behaved, they know we're there. They know that we care about the property and the community, and I'll tell you that they're well behaved because I I visit with them. So I would just really like you to think more about the spirit of our town as much as all of these regulations. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for that. Next speaker, please.
Hi, we're Camer Downtown. I don't know how many times I hear from our staff that we are a complaint-driven community. And I'm wondering why we don't open up the regulations with with a few things understood here. But just like we notify folks who are near a construction project, you know, 500 feet within 300 feet, whatever the number is, let these folks know that there's an operating short-term rental there. And every year, you do a review. And we we allow the actual performance of the short-term rental dictate whether or not it can function with non-conforming parking spots. In this case of Taylor, that you're two blocks from the parcade. In the case of Wood Lane, that you're a five-minute stumble from Deer Park Villa after a wedding. I mean, these should be performance-based, based on the neighborhood saying, hey, we have no problem with this. This is working for us. Short-term rentals do compete with long-term housing, sure. But many of the examples you heard here today don't compete with long-term housing. And they do help the economy, and they provide a good service. And I think that lightening up on the regulations, but but including notice and then having this review period, an annual renewal. And if there aren't any complaints, great, they can keep going forward, or they have an answer to a chance to answer the complaints. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Eric Stromberg, 130 Mono Avenue, Fairfax. We're one of the nine people also rejected mainly because we're in the wrong zone. So I'd like to see that that's opened up because that would allow us to. However, if you do also agree to remove the ADU that's prior to 2020, that would also knock us out. Right now, we have a legal ADU that we've rented long-term and short-term, and we really prefer to have that option open to us. I don't think if you made it illegal for, actually, I know if you made it illegal for us to have a short-term rental, that's not going to kick our unit into a long-term rental. We're using it flexibility to have family come. I like to keep that option open. It's also connected to our house. We're actually, as our family is bigger and we have bigger kids, we're using it as part of our house. So this is, I'd really like to have the flexibility, and I don't believe that having the ordinance limit us is going to solve a problem. It just makes us kind of restricted in how we'd like to use our property. So just keep that in mind, echoing what everyone else said. It's good to have these options. I'd like to keep it open. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have more speakers in the room? Do we have somebody on Zoom?
We do. On Zoom, Deborah Lee, Dee Lee, please go ahead.
Hello, thank you for hearing me. I am the devil's advocate here with an unpopular opinion. I was around here, as some of us were, before Airbnb existed. And I think that we're fooling ourselves if if we say that short-term rentals And I think that we're fooling ourselves if, if we say that short-term rentals do not replace long-term rental opportunities. I think that changing the regulations to allow duplexes to become short-term rentals rather than long-term rentals are going to take yet another unit off of the market. I did hear from people who occasionally have their families into a bedroom and also have, you know, other people in, have adequate parking without disrupting the neighborhoods, surrounding neighborhoods. On my street, there's maybe in a two-block stretch, two open parking spots. Everybody else has their kind of designated honored parking spot. So I think if you're going to change this at all, I think parking regulations need to be kept intact. I think that, I mean, a limit on the number of days that a person can operate a short-term rental would be appreciated. Tiburon, Ross, Larkspur, Salsoito, all, all, all won't allow short-term rentals. New York City stopped. I know you're talking about allowing apartment dwellers to operate short-term rentals. How's that going to be regulated? I mean, how are you going to know if somebody hasn't opened a lease in a multi-unit apartment building, pays the rent, but doesn't live there, is, is a corporate leaseholder? I mean, how are you all going to regulate that? So I, I'm opting for more restrictions, being softer on the, on the, the people who operate a bedroom out of their place, maybe, who are definitely in-house. I would not open it up to duplexes. No, it's not a very popular opinion, but that's, that's where I'm at. I think that every short-term rental takes a long-term rental, be it a roommate or whatever, off the market, and I've seen it happening in my years here in Fairfax. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Do we have the next speaker on Zoom?
I see no more hands online.
Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anybody wants to start? Seeing none?
Sure.
Oh, ah. Commissioner Newton?
Well, yeah, I mean, I really appreciate all the comments we got from the public and also staff's hard work on this. And, you know, there's definitely a tension between wanting to accommodate folks who are operating units that don't appear to be causing issues in their community. But I think, you know, as everybody acknowledges, the, the inventory of long-term rentals is the big deal. And making sure that there's enough inventory to drive the rental market down a little. You know, I mean, I think it just comes down to that simple thing. And, and the, the issue of, you know, oh, the real problem is renter protection. You know, I think that we on the planning commission may or may not agree amongst ourselves on those issues, which are not ours to decide because it's up to the council, this council and the next year's council to, to figure out what to do about the rental protection ordinances in the town. And obviously the voters are going to have their say as well. But, you know, I tend to fall on the need to keep the long-term rental inventory as healthy as we can, much as I empathize with folks who have, you know, personal reasons for not wanting their, their ADU to go out on the, for a long-term rental. And I just wonder, I guess this is a question for staff. If an ADU is used as a short-term rental, does that affect its being counting in terms of the RENA numbers? So that's sort of a big question. I don't know if you guys have an answer to that one.
Uh, no, it would not count.
So it would, if, if, if an ADU inside a, or attached to a home, let's say the one, you know, we were just looking at today, were to be registered under the short-term rental program, it would then fall off our RENA numbers. Okay. That's my thoughts for the moment. Interested to see what others think.
Okay, I'll go. Planning Commission in 2022 had the original short-term rental program come before us, which I think was a unanimous recommendation against it. I had a question for staff. An individual mentioned renting out for longer than 30 days. So how do you address that from a short-term rental or a rental? If that makes sense, because I know there are individuals that will go locally if they've got a remodel or something like that. We see that in my neighborhood and, and the next neighborhood to me a lot where somebody might have a house or whatever. And then they're rented to an individual that's doing a remodel. So how do you address, within this instance, people that would be renting temporary, but longer than 30 days at a time? Where do they fall either in the whole rental issue or short-term rentals?
Well, that's one of those things that'd be almost impossible to enforce, but they'd be considered a long-term rental and then tenant protections would apply as soon as you get past that 30 days.
Okay. So I too have concerns and it is that balance of maintaining our rental stock. So that impacts, you know, a lot of, of what we've heard where folks have duplexes and, you know, they don't run out the other unit, other than they will use them for family or whatever, or do a short term. And that was some of the concerns, both in 2022. And now another concern was parking. And we've actually, I think, when I go back and look at 2022, we had a parking standard that was based on one additional car per four guests. So if somebody had, you know, like a large family coming in two cars, then they would have to have more parking to accommodate that. There is a concern with parking availability in a lot of the neighborhoods. I had, back then, there were complaints from people in some of the narrow roads where a lot of people move out of their house when they're renting it, move in with a neighbor or friend or whatever, but there's no parking available on the road or there's issues with not sufficient width of road and that type of thing. So those were kind of a couple of my concerns where we now want to potentially expand this to every zone, lessen the parking requirement, go to any, almost any type of housing or unit. And I, you know, I'm just not comfortable with that when, without looking at specifics. I don't know if there's ways to look at this outside of a policy versus like a CUP process. I don't know if that's even feasible to address. I would also be interested in if we went down this path with limiting the numbers of days in a year. But I, you know, just expanding this, just, you know, without any limits, concerns me when I hear complaints from, have heard complaints from, from neighbors next to these. So it's my initial thoughts.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I'm going to echo a lot of the thoughts that were said, but start by saying that I think everyone in this room probably agrees that Fairfax is a great place to visit. You know, we chose to live here in Fairfax for a variety of reasons that I think feeds into its, its appeal. And, you know, we have friends and family who come visit, but also people who we don't know who come visit and contribute to the vitality of town. They frequent our shops, they frequent our businesses. And so I personally am a, I'm a proponent of providing options for folks to not just, you know, drive in, drive out, but come to town, stay to town, walk to town from wherever they're staying and, you know, experience the special place that we all call home, right? And so, you know, I also am very cognizant of, you know, our current housing crunch and the housing shortage and our need to provide additional housing units and protect the units that currently exist. It just seems like there is a fine line to walk through these regulations to try and achieve both, right? One of which seems to be the potential for limiting the total number of stays of these units, right? To incentivize long-term rentals, but also provide the flexibility for folks who, you know, don't necessarily want a long-term renter on, onsite or want to have the flexibility for friends and family who come to visit. It's, it's a, it's an option that I think warrants further review. On ADUs, I do have a question. I understand the logic and the state law that restricts ADUs built after 2020 from short-term use, right? Because the idea was that there were a lot of state laws that were passed to encourage housing production, one of which made ADUs a lot easier to build. And the intent of that law was to increase the housing stock and not provide short-term rental options, right? I understand that. I guess I just want to understand a little bit more about staff's recommendation to ban ADU STRs outright. That seems, I question it a little bit, right? These are folks who bought their homes or, you know, potentially built an ADU prior to that state legislation with the expectation that they would be able to use it for friends and family and/or potentially Airbnb, which has been around for decades now, right? And so that's the only staff recommendation that I'm, I'm kind of just struggling to fully support and, and understand. And I don't know if staff has a little bit more to say about that, but.
Yeah, I could, I could answer that. And first of all, just a clarification, you know, friends and family, if there's, it's, if you're having grandma stay in your house, that is not a business. You're not collecting rent, so that is not relevant to the discussion. However, the, the AD, the ADU thing is, I guess we just kind of put it in the same basket as a duplex. I mean, it's another unit that's on a property that has its own, its independent living quarters. So it can, if you're, if the goal is to kind of protect the rental housing supply, then I don't know if there's any difference between an ADU or a duplex. That's just, that was just my thought. And I thought it was kind of strange that we carved out the after 2020 because I know that's the state law and that's probably why it was done just because we have different rules that apply to, to ADUs that are built after that time period in other parts of the code. So I think that was just why we did that, but it just didn't make sense to me, that's all.
Well, and to that point of the 2020 timeframe, again, Fairfax prohibited in, in 2017. That was the first, when we were looking at ADU, JADU, annual state laws that come down, we had the flexibility at that point to either allow short-term rentals or prohibit them. The planning commission unanimously recommended, again, because of housing issues to the council to prohibit them from that point on. And the council approved that. So in actuality, they've been prohibited since 2017. The council took with their initial short-term rental policies, started that from 2020. So it was a little odd, but it was since 2017.
Okay, and just so I'm clear, this is talking about units built 2017 and later? Or just since 2017, all short-term rentals and ADUs have been theoretically disallowed by Fairfax?
I'd have to go back to the state ADU.
My understanding about the short-term rentals is our ordinances were very specific about what permitted uses were. Each residential zone listed what you could do. And, and it didn't, if, if it wasn't listed as a permitted use, it wasn't allowed. Short-term rentals weren't even envisioned when the code was adopted in 1973. So short-term rentals were not listed as a permitted use. They were not listed as a conditional use. So they were prohibited, right, by omission. So that's, that's been since 1973 when the current code went into effect. And then the, the town decided to allow ADUs, right, at a certain point. And we adopted our own ordinance long before the state started forcing them on, on communities. The state got involved and just eliminated our ability to kind of control how ADUs occurred. But short-term rentals were never listed as permitted uses anywhere. That's, that's how we got where we are now.
But we did allow the short-term rentals, which is why we are now considering a recommendation to modify that.
That's right. The council decided to allow short-term rentals. Just what year did that, did that go into effect? 2022.
Can I jump in and ask another question? I'm sorry, Daniel, if you're not done.
I guess maybe what I'll just say to kind of wrap this, this point up is just, you know, has staff done any kind of research about what other towns in Marin are doing? I guess just globally about STRs, but maybe even specifically about the ADU question, right? Because I'm sure this is a question that everyone is facing, right? Because state law is such and now all of these towns are reacting. And so what, you know, for example, does Cormodera do unless they're one of the ones that outright, outright ban them? Is that something that staff has looked at?
No, I haven't made a spreadsheet, whatever town does, but there, I do know that several jurisdictions just do an outright ban. Marin County and, and the unincorporated areas, I think, is fairly open to them. But they have a, they just established a cap on the total number. But I haven't drilled down enough with them to know if they have certain development standards you have to meet or not. But, but yeah, they're, they're, they can, they allow them up to a certain number and then they just say no, and they're not up to that number yet.
But I think the question was, is there any way to tell, like, community? Tell me if I'm right. Marin wide, how many of the eight, of the short-term rentals are occurring in accessory dwelling units? Is there any way to figure that out?
I think we could really figure that out.
Was that, was that what you were asking?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a part of it.
Without asking the, each planner in every jurisdiction. And a lot of them don't regulate short-term rentals at all, so they wouldn't know. They just kind of like, just don't either ignore it. I mean, because that's how Fairfax was and that's why we have so many that are operating in town is that we just didn't regulate them at all. So if they were on the Airbnb or, or all these other things, we just didn't even, you know, didn't know that they were there because we weren't looking for them. Saying we didn't have any, I don't know if we had any complaints or not. So anyway.
Yes, we got some complaints.
Yeah, so you might have gotten a few complaints, but.
So, so if we got a complaint, we didn't have a short-term rental program. But if we got a complaint from a neighbor.
We advised the owner that they were not allowed to short-term rental the property.
Okay.
That they were a violation of the code.
Yeah, it's not on the list of permitted uses.
At that point, they weren't allowed, you know, they weren't allowed anywhere. And they did create problems. People would, you know, not used to the neighborhood, would hit retaining walls and damage them, neighbors retaining walls, right? I mean, stuff did happen that was not good. Right? But not that many. I mean, really not that many complaints. Seriously, I think we maybe had three about short-term rentals, and that's not very many when you think about how many were out there. Right? Parking was a big thing, because in Fairfax and the hillsides, parking is bad. Right? Yeah.
I, I have an observation. Um, we've lumped them all together. I think we need to bifurcate the discussion. The, if you go back to 20 years, how the whole short-term rental started, that started as house swapping. You would go to Greece on vacation and the Greek family would come here. So the, and we've heard from the public as well, people who rent out a, say, a room in their house. So those things are not units. If you, if you rent out a room, or if you temporarily leave your house and you rent out your house, you're not taking away any units from the market. You're also not adding any cars. You're not, there's nothing happening other than that maybe the people who come in misbehave, but that's a separate item. So those kinds of short-term rentals should not be hindered by those additional requirements. You don't need additional parking if you do that.
Why? I don't, so.
Let me, let me, let me finish, let me finish, then we'll come back. And then on the other side are the ADUs and the duplexes. And they, by default, take away a unit from the long-term rental, because that's how they originally were built in, let's say, 1950s. Um, and so you might want to be more careful with that group. And so the ADUs and the duplexes are one side that we have to look at, what are you doing and why? And what do you allow? The whole house temporarily rent out or rooms are different. Now, so for the whole house, you want to set a term limit, because otherwise you're running afoul. There are towns that have gone spectacularly wrong by not regulating it, and the damage can be irreparable. You will ruin your entire environment. So you want to set probably a max that you can only rent out your primary house, the whole thing. You go away for whatever the right number of days is. I've heard 90, what they use, but. So that means you cannot permanently rent out your entire house, because then it becomes a business. The discussion for duplexes and ADUs is more difficult, I think, because an outright ban, and that, that's where I get, I have the same problem as you. If you do it for 2020, that makes sense, because they, they are granted special treatment to build those units, to put them on the market. But then how do you go? That's going to be a tough one. But I think the important part here is that you want to look at two different groups. It's not all short-term rentals. No, you have this one that is like the old idea. And you have the new ADUs and existing housing, uh, duplexes and other units. Anyway, that was my observation. I think that needs to be part of it. Uh, Commissioner Newton, please. Sorry.
I just, I, I don't understand why you think if somebody's renting a room in their house, there's not going to be additional car.
Correct. It could be an additional car. Yes.
So for that reason, I disagree about the parking issue with respect to that. But I, I'm, I'm interested in this. I, I like the way you're thinking about bifurcating it, because, uh, when we heard about somebody renting a room that didn't have, for example, a kitchen, uh, utilities, you know, you can imagine an Airbnb of just a room, you know, that might have its own separate entrance and not have, now our JADUs, it had to have like a counter with the ability, you know, with a sink and the ability to plug in a microwave. And, you know, if the renting of the room with the separate entrance, but not the JADU capability to have kitchen, uh, is allowed. I mean, that does open it up for people with the bigger houses and stuff to be able to participate in this. But we, see, my, my concern is definitely wanting to keep the ADUs and the JADUs in our RENA quotas that we're, you know, always trying to, uh, you know, meet our numbers, um, unfortunately. But, uh, anyway, that, those are my thoughts.
But it's not for the, you know, keeping the ADUs and JADUs within our RENA numbers. It's also the fact that the state has prohibited their use as short-term rentals since 2020. And we did it earlier, but they are prohibited from being used as a short-term rental, regardless of whether they count for arena number or not.
Okay. I have a couple anecdotes. Uh, I'll make them quick. About 12 years ago, uh, my house here in Fairfax was on a very small road up the hill. Three doors up, there was a property that was a longtime family in Fairfax. On that property, there was a house, separate from their house, that they rented full-time, long-term rental. There was another house, very small house, that they rented as essentially a short-term rental. And they also rented two different rooms in their bigger house on a short-term basis. I love the family. They were great. Uh, parking was horrible, particularly when all of those units were, used. Uh, it should be known that actually this house had no parking. It was all street parking, because we were up on the hill, right? It was an old house, old property, and that's just what it is. That's a Fairfax condition. Right? How we're going to regulate that, I have no idea, because that, that has every type. Right? And, um, so just as an example, this is such a, you know, how far we could unravel it? What can you really regulate? I'm not sure. Okay. The, we used, um, I, we would have friends that would come into town and we would use them. But, you know, more often than not, that was one or two times a year, more often than not, we would struggle with folks that were renting just for the night and didn't know how to park on this hill, would cause traffic jams when people are trying to come down in traffic and, you know, it was, but, you know, we were also neighbors. And so we worked it out. Right? And I have confidence that in Fairfax, that's going to happen a lot more than you're going to get complaints to the police department about whatever. So that, that's one anecdote. Thanks for indulging me. The second anecdote is, um, recently, in the last couple of years of my life, I actually, uh, was an Airbnb client for about a year. And about half of my time was spent using, uh, temporary rentals, some of them in Fairfax, some of them in West Marin, some of them in Belina, some of them all over. I have a very good, uh, I'm a, I'm an expert. Um, and I do think that there is a key difference in a, a unit having a kitchen or not. As an Airbnb client, right? It's different. It, that does, in my mind, um, there's a big distinction there. And I don't know whether it's ADU, uh, whether it's an extra unit on their property, whether it's a, shed that happens to have a kitchen. Um, I have seen all of them. I don't think I stayed, stayed in a yurt or an RV, but I had pretty much everything else, including sheds. Okay. So with all that said, um, I wish there was a way to incentivize, not penalize. I wish there was a way to incentivize long-term rentals. Um, and that would be the thing, right? Um, I actually believe that of your list, that you've, um, said that you would keep these regulations in place. I think I would move to get rid of all of them, frankly. As long as there was, uh, you know, possibly an inspection to make sure that the yurt was safe, I think yurts would be great. Um, I don't know why we would say you can't do that. I, there was chances for me to stay in a yurt. I just chose not to, for whatever reason, not because it was a yurt. I can tell you that. I mean, it probably would have been wonderful. Um, so I actually believe that, the one, the one that, the one thing that I also think that could possibly be a, a tier is rates of, um, fees for investors or people that have more than, say, three units that they're renting. Possibly that's a higher rate, uh, to disincentivize investor properties and to not penalize mom and pop folks, folks that are just renting out a room at the same rate as an investor. I think that's inherently not in the nature of Fairfax. Um, so I don't know if there's a way to do that. So, um, those are my thoughts.
I saw you had three stories to tell. You should go work for the town of Fairfax and, and tell them anyway. Thank you for that. I, I disagree with living in our fees and yours. Uh, that's a can of worms. But anyway, my personal opinion is that that is, if you do that, you might get things happening that you didn't wish for. Um, other than that, thank you for that. So how do we go forward from here? Because we have a whole list.
Okay, now can I clarify just one thing?
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I know that there is some desire to be a little bit easier on like the single-room rentals. Like if somebody just has a room, doesn't have a kitchen, to make that easier. The only problem with that is that, um, the two that I think that have tried to register don't have the parking. So I think unless you change the parking, you won't be helping those types of units. I just wanted to.
Yeah, I, I think the, I started this out by splitting it up. I think the split, the first split should be the old school one. You, you go on vacation and somebody uses your house when you're on vacation. That's a type of short-term rental that's quite unique, because you are not, you, you don't need additional parking. Your entire house is, goes on the market. So that should be possible. And I don't see that in the documents, but that is a type that would not require anything specific. And then the room, the room, I think Commissioner Newton is correct, the room that you do involve a car. Most likely people will arrive by car. So it, I lumped it together with the house, because it's not a, it's not a long-term rental. It's not a unit you're taking off the market. It's a room. But it, they do bring a car, so that's then its own category. And then the ADUs are their own category, because the state doesn't allow it. So then what do you do with the old ones? And then the duplexes basically are their own category. It's, it's, so now you have four.
So with.
They're all quite different.
So with the traditional approach, where, you know, I'm going on vacation for a month. You know, so maybe I'll rent out my place, or where I'm going to vacation, then it will swap. That's a house swap. I don't even know if that type of thing would even fit into this as it's kind of a once, one-time kind of thing, where I'm going on vacation. So maybe somebody will come and we'll switch or whatever. Does that even fit into this? Versus this being a regulated business that we do?
Well, it was the, I think of Airbnb, but it has become a financial transaction, right? You don't do a one-for-one swap anymore. You find something where you want to go and somebody else rents your house. It's, it's purely, it, it's no longer a one-for-one swap. So it is, you don't know, if you, if you rent an Airbnb, you don't know if what you rent is sitting empty, if you are not there, or if you're not there, the owner is sitting there.
Right. But I still see, you know, online where people will do that. They will go, I'm going to wherever, you know, so I want to rent out my place. So you still have that, and they're not doing it through like a third-party company. So that's what I was getting at with that.
Can I make, can I make a personal observation comment regarding parking? With, uh, the Airbnb market, on that temporary market, um, folks that are renting rely on good reviews. And if there's trouble with parking, they're not going to get a good review. The market is going to control that for sort of, um, one aspect of it, right? I went up, my anecdote about living on the hill and watching, you know, having to deal with parking on the street and whatnot. Um, I think that what I found, you know, 10 years later, just last year, was that the, the neighbors worked it out with the other neighbors. There was, you know, they would even, they would move their car down the hill, so you could use their parking spot, et cetera. Right? So they want to be hospitable. Right? So I think I would not require an additional parking spot. This would be my recommendation.
Okay. And to that, because I've seen the other part of that, where we, where our infrastructure is such, and you've been up in the hills, that there isn't sufficient parking, that I think that needs to be regulated in some manner. And I don't know if you do that, you know, we talk about CUPs, whatever. I don't know if you do that on an individual basis, but I think parking is important and limited in this town, and we need to find a way, um, to deal with that if we're going to go down this path. You know, before it was saying one additional parking space for every four, people coming. We need to address that, and we can't leave that to just out there in the community and having neighbors deal with it. So there has to be some regulation there to address that.
I agree with you, but I'd like to give you a counterpoint also of an example that's right here downtown, uh, Fairfax. It's a, a couple that rents out their very small house, um, and they travel when they don't have it rented. And so in that case, they would be required to add a spot when they're not there.
I think that example, though, fits within what, uh, Chair Jansen was referencing, which is you don't need a parking if, if you're just, your whole house is the, uh, is the short-term rental unit. Because where you used to park is now where it's going to be, where your renters are going to be parking. I'd say you have no parking requirement for that scenario. I agree.
And so then it depends on the individual situation, because there's people that have houses that don't have parking. Right? So you have to look at that in some manner, so that, you know, in your case, where somebody, in your case, where somebody is leaving and somebody's taking their place, then they're theoretically taking that off-street parking space that that individual would have had.
Right. What's the problem? So that was my, my problem. I have no driveway. My house is right on the street. Right? If I wanted to leave, oh, I could be doing this this whole time. No, no, no. No, if I went to leave, where I would usually park would be where the renters would park. Right? Are you thinking I leave my car on the street and now you have two cars on the street?
Can I point out that sometimes people don't come together when they come to these short-term rentals? There are groups that have come from different places and they come separately in separate vehicles. It's not that straightforward.
So I think parking needs to be addressed, and that's a further discussion and, and look. Because I think that is important in the community, um, and it impacts the community. So I think that needs to have some more thought with consideration to the infrastructure we have.
Can I, can I ask, of the limited number of complaints that we've gotten about existing SDRs, do you have any sense of how many actually related to parking?
So before, before we got involved, right? It was only when the, when the short-term rental created a problem. And I think two of them were caused by parking. And the third, I think I can only remember three. The third was that people come into our narrow streets. They don't know how to drive. They don't know the neighborhood, and they have done damage. Right? So that's, that's my only experience with it. But I'm only one staff person. I don't know how many the building official took. You know, we, we don't have code enforcement, so a complaint gets assigned to a different staff person. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to add two additional points. One is, I know some communities require hosts to have a sort of guideline of neighborly conduct, right? The, the neighborhood noise ordinance, where you're supposed to park, how are you supposed to access it? Where not to drive up, where to drive up. I mean, and I feel like that's quite helpful for folks who, you know, in the cases that we've been talking about, don't know the area and it's, uh, short and night, I'm sorry, narrow and windy roads. So that's one thing I think, uh, staff could consider. And another, and not to sort of sound like a broken record here, but I'm going to bring it up again. You know, with, theoretically with a cap on total number of nights per calendar year, you're theoretically putting a cap on the impacts. Right? And so some of these questions like parking and. And so some of these questions like parking and noise are obviously still a consideration, but but they're not happening every night, right? They're not happening even every week. I mean, it's, it's, it's a much more limited enterprise. So.
And and so to the, you know, having like the the visitor binder, right? When you go into one of these places or something with, here's the restaurants, here's the rules. That's part of what was already addressed. Um, initially, when this went through in 2022, they suggested um, some of those. So I assume that that's still part of something that is addressed um, for somebody who actually comes and registers for that. But so that's one. Um, but I, from my perspective, I still am concerned about taking rentals off the market. And I know that's, you know, that's not going to work for everybody, but you know, we have that balance that we need to make. And then the other piece of that, I like the, you know, a thought of tapping the number of days as well as something to to think about.
And I can't tell you how many people have come to the counter, like I wasn't counting them. And they come in and they're all, we, I love Airbnbs, but I don't want them in my neighborhood in Fairfax, right? They like to use them, but they don't necessarily want them in their neighborhood.
Yeah, they they become a problem if there's too many relatively to what the original residential neighborhood is. And and that's happened in towns and cities. And that's also usually where the cap come in. They came a little late. That was like an emergency measure to stop the bleeding. Luckily, we are not there, of course. It's not happening in our town yet, but we need to prevent it. Um, preventing that you get so many Airbnbs that the, that they start to overcrowd the permanent residents, which actually happens in towns and cities. So that brings us back to right, what the original intent is. I think the um, you want to limit impact on people who'd like to rent them short term. But at the same time, we need to prevent that real housing units disappear from the market. And the question, right, the choice to do short term or long term? I think um, regarding long term renting, I think this November, everybody can vent its opinion, how that should work. Um, that's a separate issue. We're only talking about what we need to do with the short term. It might be good if we take, if I make a motion for a short recess. We have a little bathroom break. And then when we come back, I think I'd like to dive into what the recommendation, because we have a long, very long document with um, a lot of points. We have had a discussion here. I'd like to think about how we're going to go about responding to that. So I'll make a motion for five minute recess. Anybody seconds?
We're good.
Okay. We'll back at, the time is now. It's nine fifty-three, so we'd be back at ten. Okay, um, we'll start without Commissioner Newton, I think we can do that. Okay.
Yes, you have a quorum.
Oh, there, there she is. Welcome back. I have one clarifying question for staff. There, there in the PDF version, there are actually two resolutions. There is a resolution two thousand twenty-four dash XX, which is the first one, attachment A. Then there is the ordinance exhibit one. And then there is what I believe is intended to be the resolution, resolution twenty-four dash nothing.
Correct, there's two resolution. The, the first resolution is the planning commission resolution, which makes the recommendation to the town council on the ordinance.
Okay.
And then the second resolution is changes the procedures related to short term rentals. And the only reason that's included is because it, there's just one small change to that document, which is accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units were added as a list of ineligible properties. Ineligible.
But they would become uh, eligible.
Correct, yeah, that was the only change. So that's the only reason that other resolution was included at all.
Be nine, okay.
So you'd be making a recommendation on the ordinance and that um, a redo of the resolution.
The first resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You you'd just be adopting the first resolution is basically what you're doing.
Okay, yeah, so um, to bring this to an end, I propose that we step through that resolution. And item for item, see if we agree and and or to the end, add anything that we discussed that we believe needs to be in there. I saw, I think that is page on the PDF. That is page, oh, it doesn't tell me anymore, interesting. It's attachment A, it's very end.
I think the first, if you want to go straight to the, the beef, if you will, you want to go to the ordinance.
Okay.
And then the definition of short term rental. So the first recommended change would be to, this is where it says an existing single family residence or portion of an existing single family residence. So if you want to open it up to more than just single family, you have to cross that out. And um, so anyway, so it's just, you have to amend what is the definition of a short term rental.
The recommendation is to not limit it to a single family, but any type of residence, which could include condos or rentals or any other.
Yeah, correct.
In this, it's also crossed out. Accessory dwelling units are crossed out and so ADUs and JADUs are crossed out. What does that mean? Because we know.
It's just not singling out that type. So it would be basically the definition would read an existing residence or portion of an existing residence. As long as that resident is not an accessory dwelling unit or junior accessory dwelling unit.
All of them would be excluded. So that was the discussion we had prior. Is it twenty, we know it is from twenty twenty on because that's by state law. Do we agree that it is true for any ADU and JADU? That's one question. The other question is, do we agree that it's not single family only, but it may also be condominiums or apartments? So there's two questions in that one statement. Maybe we'll take a quick, we do that by a quick poll. So let's say um, don't limit it to single family condos can be short terms as well.
No, we don't have any of those in town, but.
Uh, apartments, um, yeah. In theory, that's possible. I see two thumbs up. I don't see Commissioner Newton. Do you agree to that? Four thumbs up, Commissioner Swift. You may abstain.
So to allow apartments to do it?
Your mic is off.
Sorry, um, to allow apartments to do it?
Yes, of course, if that's legal, if the owner wants it, but so you don't limit it to single family homes only. You, any type of property that is suitable and allowable may be used as a short term rental. And complying with all the other conditions.
But eh, but we're also not talking about duplexes. Or are we?
We are talking about everything.
Everything.
Okay.
You don't limit it by type.
Then I disagree.
That ADUs and JADUs, which is the next question, right?
The next question is, yeah, what it does exclude, as stated here, are all ADUs and all JADUs. Not just twenty twenty or twenty seventeen, but all of them. That's the second part, but there's two questions in this one.
Okay, so all ADUs and JADUs.
Are excluded, cannot be.
Correct, and and I would also say that, you know, going back to keeping our rental stock, that we shouldn't be looking at duplexes. If they're a part of that.
They, they are not excluded here, so.
But it would be owner occupied thing that would make this different, Cindy. It's not like the owner of one side of the duplex is, we're not saying they can make the other side of the duplex a short term rental. What we're saying is they can use their half of the duplex that they live in as a uh, B and B when they go out of town for two weeks.
So I would ask the planning director if that's the intent, because a lot of what we're hearing is duplexes where the owner would be in one of the units and run out the other unit as a short term rental in lieu of a long term rental.
Yeah, correct, it's uh, Commissioner Newton is correct and it it does get complicated with duplexes, just on how it's written. But the way that it's proposed is that if, yeah, if you wanted to rent, like if you lived in one of the sides of the duplex and and whether you were the renter or the or the owner and that was your permanent residence and you wanted to go away for the weekend and rent out your duplex unit as a short term rental, you could. And then you would come back and you would occupy the unit. What's not allowed is if you, currently, what's not allowed is if you own the whole duplex, you live in one side and then you use the other duplex as a continuing short term rental. That that would not be permitted.
And that's what I'm addressing is, and we've heard it tonight, that I own a duplex. I don't rent out. And I own it and I live in one of the units. I don't rent out the other unit long term. I use that for a short term rental.
Yeah, the way this is written, that would not be, that's not permitted now. And the way this is rented, that would, the way that this is written, that would not be allowed.
Is that clear, the way it is written?
And what, and what Chair Jansen is asking is if you feel the same way, whether it's a twenty unit building, a two unit duplex or a single family home, if they all have the same thing in common, which is the short term rental is for uh, the unit that the, you know, the lessor is renting, that that there is their full time home, then it wouldn't matter if it was a renter in a twenty unit building or a two unit building or a single family home. It would be the same concept.
Yeah, I I'm having trouble with the way this is written. I keep rereading it and um, it doesn't make any sense because it 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 triggers a whole bunch of secondary questions. So I I think it needs to be what it is trying to do, which is I think good, that you don't limit it to a particular type of building. It doesn't have to be a single family residence. That's good. It can be something else, perfectly fine. That's what it's trying to do. And then at the same time, it's trying to do the second thing, which is saying, well, if ADUs from twenty twenty are not allowed, then none of them should be allowed. And then it's ambiguous beyond that. And so that would mean indeed that you, and we talked about this before, ADUs are in some way similar as duplexes. So you don't allow any of that. That seems a little bit too harsh. Because that is sometimes the purpose of a secondary unit. Um, Commissioner Newton, please go ahead.
Yeah, and I think if somebody had the ADU or the JADU, you know, in place and and it was legally available because it wasn't one that was created after January first, twenty twenty, uh, that there's a certain, you know, right of property that, you know, the owner might uh, feel they had towards being able to use that previous, you know, grandfathered in ADU or JADU, uh, despite what the law then did to ones created after twenty twenty. So, you know, I like the way you phrase the first question being, do we agree that it could go beyond just single family homes? And the second question being, do we agree that the uh, we want to make all ADUs and JADUs accepted from this allowance of a short term rental? And I would not personally want to see it apply to the ones created before twenty twenty. My two cents.
I'd like to just relate to my first anecdote. Um, and that family has been renting essentially a junior ADU since the seventies. And they would now not be able to, as an example. Um, and I don't, I don't support that.
Well, just to clarify, short term rentals were not, I mean, hype, I mean, I know this is hypothetical, but hypothetically, short term rentals were not allowed anywhere in town. It ever, at any time. It's just that it just happened to be that the short term rental industry kind of grew up and we didn't have regulations to cover it. So, so we're not taking away anybody's property rights. I just want to make that clear. We're not removing anybody's property rights in a legal sense. Now, yeah, if somebody's been doing it since the seventies, you you are eliminating their ability to continue to do it. But yeah, only because the law caught up with them, so.
And and we may get to a point where this comes back to us, right? After we go through this and we talk through some of these issues. But to me, um, the ADUs and JADUs would not be a part of this.
Uh, I'm also of the opinion, as I, as I mentioned previously, where, you know, JADUs and ADUs built before twenty twenty or twenty seventeen, whatever the the legal requirement is, do seem to sort of be a special case where it's folks who have bought properties or built ADUs kind of with the expectation of that flexibility. And they didn't directly benefit from the uh, the new state laws that incentivized and um, made ADUs easier, easier to build. And so I would agree. I would agree on that front, that it should not apply to ADUs built before whatever the cutoff is, twenty twenty or twenty seventeen.
So in that, in that case, I think I've heard from a couple commissioners, we would just not strike out that sentence then. And it would be
Right.
We would just reestablish it as the way it was.
Correct, yeah. It, it, it's like a inherited right of usage that has been there. People might have bought a duplex for the very purpose of doing that. Possibly, and so legally, you are not taking it away from them, but it's um,
I'm being too mean is what you're saying.
Sorry?
I'm being too mean.
No, 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 I I think, so it it it's very good to restrict it because we don't want this to get out of hand for two reasons, right? It can become a basically a public nuisance, but it also can destroy the availability of units. So that's very important. But we probably need to regulate that in a different way and not by turning those knobs on those, on the type of building, like if you do have this piece, you're not allowed. And if you don't, you don't. That seems unfair is probably the right word, because Fairfax is a town with a lot of silly, noncompliant things all over the place. And so you get a sort of a random pick who can and who cannot. And that seems, to me, that seems not entirely correct. That's, that's, that's where the sentiment is.
But that also, so if you're talking about things that are in compliance or not, you're also talking about that some of these may not be compliant units.
Yeah.
That have been around for a long time, that have been used as rentals. So you get into a whole other aspect of this where they're going to be operating a business in a unit that may be from thirty years ago, that may not be up to code, so.
Correct.
I, I really appreciated what you were getting at earlier, Commissioner Swift, about potentially, you know, permitting where there may be these, you know, we know we have the odd shaped lots issues and the things that have been built before we had town codes and things like that. And um, I think that it it's an interesting concept as to how we might be able to permit uh, a situation where somebody has an ADU, but they're not going to be renting it out, you know. They're not going to be renting it out, you know, and maybe they come to us, you know, it's this idea of not having any standards. Versus establishing standards. And then, you know, all the straight up people come in and try and meet the standards. And the people who don't even bother to say anything and try to hide in the shadows almost get rewarded for not following the standards. But if we allow for some relaxation for those who are. Coming forward and trying to do the right thing. I think, I think that would be a, hopefully maybe a way to balance all these different interests. Because I don't want to see people taking out the kitchen part. Of their JADU so they can now use it as a short term rental. I mean, I want to keep encouraging us. To create more inventory for the long term rental. And I like the whole question of how do we incentivize that? Because I don't have an answer, but. I do like the idea that maybe there's another. I mean, I don't want to make more process and more bureaucracy, but you know, maybe there is a way to get the planning commission to say, you know what? Given all the circumstances and the totality and the fact that you did come in and try and do the right thing and check all the boxes and. And register means that the. Planning Commission will let you continue doing this this year while you don't have all the parking that you would otherwise have needed. I don't know.
So you're talking about like a CUP?
Yeah, I said, I like your idea.
Well, that was the first paragraph.
Yeah, well.
Well, I think maybe what we need to do is just go through the whole thing and it's just going to bring up. A lot of the questions and thoughts that we had such as limiting the amount of time or relooking parking and then saying. Staff, you need to consider all that and maybe have another just study session or something, but come back because I don't think. That what we have here necessarily is going to, what's in here is going to address everything we talked about. Tonight.
Or maybe we go over. Page six of the staff report is where. Our planning director has tried to summarize what he wanted us to weigh in on. A possible change, their recommendation. We just go through that one page. You know, we don't have to necessarily fiddle on all the little. Details, but I don't know. It's up to you guys.
Well, there's not that many sections in this. And so there, it does come back because, right, the next one is about the parking. So. The, right, the initial thinking is, we started with number one, but. And I believe we do agree on that. We're not trying to limit this by, I'm not entirely sure I'm asking the question. We're not trying to limit it by the building type, but there are other things we're looking for, like parking, like the. Long term of it, how many days, there's all kinds of things that we discussed on. That's where I was going with. Section one. We allow. In principle, we allow any type of residence. Except the way it was worded originally for ADUs. Established after 2020, because that's not allowed by state. So all types are in theory open to become an ADU, but then there are these other requirements. You must have parking. If you don't have parking, you can't do it, et cetera. Whatever it is that comes in the next sections.
So are you saying when you talk about. All types of residents? So if I have the duplex. And I live in the duplex and I rent out the, the other unit, that would be okay?
If it complies and if we don't put other.
Wait, 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 wait. You can rent out the other unit? No, because don't we have a requirement that it be owner occupied in order to be a short term rental? And so Cindy, you keep talking about the other unit being rented out as a short term rental. And I don't think that's what we're talking about.
Well, let's clarify that too. So if, if I own a duplex and I live in one unit. I can rent out the other.
No.
Short term. No, because the other is not owner occupied.
And it's not occupied by permanent resident. That's the way that we're slicing this, because if, if, like, there's lots of houses in Fairfax that are rented, like long term. And so if you're renting it year after year after year, then you should be eligible to have that as a short term rental, as long as you have owner permission.
Yes.
Then you can work out the finances between the two of you.
Yes.
So it's the same concept with a duplex. You have, you have an owner that lives in one and a long term renter that lives in the other. Then they're both eligible to have a short term rental, but you have to have a permanent resident in the unit that's being offered as a short term rental. That's the way it's currently written.
Okay.
And so it doesn't mean you couldn't change it to allow that duplex situation, but right now that's not what it says.
Is that then also true for an ADU? If you were to keep the language it was, so we're not talking about ADUs after 2020, the older ones. The main house is occupied by the owner, but not the ADU. So you cannot make it a duplex.
This is why I wanted to change the definition.
Okay. You basically, you're changing the definition to make it comply with what already is implied.
They would be treated the same duplex and the ADU. Scenario would be treated the same. The resident in the ADU. Could rent out the ADU if they have the permission of the owner. The resident in unit number two of the duplex. Whether they're the owner or the renter could rent out their home. I think that's the key is that we're talking about people putting up the home they live in. As the short term rental. You can't put up your, your tenant's unit. As a short term rental.
Can we get clarification on that in relation to the state law?
As far as what?
ADUs not being used as short term rentals?
Yeah, you absolutely, the state law doesn't allow you to use short, ADUs as short term rentals built after 2020.
But we were talking about the ones built before that.
And that's why we have to have this complicated definition in here to say that you, you know, can't use those.
And they would have to be renter occupied. According to this approach. So if I'm in an ADU. That was built.
Before.
Before some point in time. I would have to be renting that ADU. And then be able to rent it out.
Right.
I don't know. You don't have to be a renter. You could be the owner's mother in law. But it's your home. That's where you live full time.
It's hard to, it's a challenge.
So I don't know if you have to legally be a renter. That just has to be your home where you live.
It has to be occupied. So somebody is living in it and they can rent it out. With the owner's permission.
Yes.
I'd like to just go out on a limb here and just say that I'm actually in favor of not regulating in those terms. I think that all units should be able to be short term rentals and that we should regulate it in a different way. Even, so what I'm saying is both sides of the duplex or the main house and the ADU should, if it's prior to. 2017 or whenever the date is, should be able to be rented out as a short term rental and that we should regulate it in some other way.
Yeah, this ordinance is saying the exact opposite.
Yeah, like.
This makes it, yeah, this makes it impossible to have any kind of short term rental unless it is the house you're living in. Either by ownership or renter.
Right.
That's what this says.
So what is Commissioner Kelly's? Concept for the other way you could regulate them?
I think we heard examples tonight of possibly limits in number of nights that you could rent as a short term rental. Which would incentivize someone to use it as a long term rental instead. I don't know. That's the only thing I've heard tonight that would be a way to do it. I think that particular fees, if you happen to be trying to rent. For apartments, you know, if a house is divided up like an example that I gave. And there's actually four units being rented, maybe that's a higher fee rate, which would incentivize them also not to do that. I'm not sure.
Can you put your mic on?
Sorry. Does that seem like something that we need to get clarification on to come back? That, to come up with something that's applicable there? Or do you feel that that as written?
Well, we're proposing something completely different, so that's unlikely. We can dream that up right here. If I hear correctly. Then. The ordinance that we're looking at is doing the exact opposite of what we're thinking where it needs to go. This makes it, this is a very stringent, narrow definition. You can basically. Only have short term rentals in your own house, owned or rented. That's about it. You can never use a unit. Or the second part of your duplex. None of that.
Correct.
Which certainly helps prevent that there's going to be too many. That will solve that problem, definitely. But it is. Something that I'm not sure the commission feels is a good way to go about it.
But isn't this currently?
A little bit too stringent.
Isn't this currently the way the ordinance is written? And I don't know that we're being, I mean, we could make a recommendation. I'm not sure I agree with Commissioner Kelly. But as a whole body, we could make a recommendation if we disagree with that. But I think. That's the way the ordinance is currently framed. And what staff is asking us. I mean, I would definitely, I thought that we already had like a cap. On how many days a year you could rent. I thought we had a 30 day cap on how many days a year, but. If we don't, I'm all in favor of putting a cap on the framework that we currently have in the ordinance. But I'm not sure I would agree to. Completely overhaul the framework that we currently have.
I think the existing, so this is proposing a change to the existing. The existing. Talks about. A single family residence or portion of an existing single family residence. Or a accessory dwelling unit or if it's established prior to. January 1st, 2020. So the current. Code language does allow you to rent out an ADU at your property, correct? And it does allow you to rent out a room in your house or your whole house. It allows all those things.
Yeah, and ADU is considered a part of the residence in this context.
So the current language allows that. What is in front of us in the ordinance is to strike all that. And the consequence, if you strike that. Plus the stipulation that as long as that residence is not an ADU. Makes it impossible to make a short term unit in any ADU or second part of a duplex or any other kind of thing.
And we already voted. I saw all the thumbs go up that we were not going to strike that anymore.
No, I know. That was the first part of reading through that, right? We had two parts in it. And the first part, and I think that still stands. The, the single family limitation is something that we did not believe is important because it could be something else. That's the part we agreed to. I think. Any physical type of property could be. A short term rental, if you allow short term rentals and how you allow them. That's a separate part. But you don't want to limit it to only a single family residence. It can be something else. That was the first part. And then we got stuck on the second part. And so the. Again, I repeat it. I believe that what I see in the commissioners around me, that we believe that's too stringent. To completely eliminate that. And as stated, it will take care of the concern, but I think it's too draconian. Go ahead, Commissioner Newton.
I was just gonna say, I misunderstood if the current language. Would allow the owner of the home. To. Put the ADU or the JADU that was created before whatever date is pertinent. They could put that up to a short term rental. And it doesn't have to be limited to the resident of the EDU or the JADU. I was. That's less restrictive and I think makes a lot more sense if. We're just limiting it to that pre 2020 period, pre 2017, I don't know.
I hate to ask this, but can you repeat that?
Yeah, I was, I'm still processing too. Can you repeat that, Commissioner Newton?
Well, you know, I'm just following along with what I think you're doing, which is we had the two questions. The first one. Are we all good with going beyond just single family residences being eligible for short term rentals? And I think we all agree, yes. And then the second question was, do we want to. Make all ADUs and JDUs the exception? Or do we want to leave it so that any JADU or ADU built prior. To the magic cutoff date would still be eligible to be a short term rental? And I think many of us were like, yeah, that's okay. Let's leave the pre 2020, pre 2017, wherever the date is. In the mix for short term rentals, even though the ones. That are post 2020 are out by virtue of state law. Right?
Yeah. So basically eliminate my strikeout.
Right.
The third strikeout.
Yeah, the third strikeout. Eliminate the third strike.
Right.
But again, are we talking about occupied? ADUs or we, and JDUs or we?
No, no.
Are we talking about? Any of them?
Any ADU.
So there again, if they're not occupied. By a resident, then we're taking. Permanent rental housing potentially off the market.
Correct.
So from that standpoint.
Yep.
I'm not in favor of that.
But it only comes off our RENA numbers if they come in and register it. As a short term rental.
And I'm not concerned about the RENA numbers at all with this.
But what I, I'm. So an otherwise unoccupied JADU is now not available for. Short term rental. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That the family is not going to rent out for a long term renter. Because they expect family to come a couple of times a year. Their, their. Pre 2020 JADU. Is not eligible under your. Opinion for the short term rental.
Correct. Because again, it goes back to that balance between. Long term housing that we have an issue with. And short term housing.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean that they can't use that for family. To come. A lot of people build ADUs. And they don't rent them out, but they have them for family or whatever. But it's that concept that. We struggle with is housing shortage.
Correct. Yeah, it does not relate to family. I think there, I think maybe this little shell shock by interpreting this, right? What this basically means, this is a complete ban on short term rentals, except if it's your own house. That's what it is. And that's not how we started the discussion. So. as I said, that needs more thinking. That pretty, that's a serious measure.
Well, it was how we started thinking about it because you had separated us into the different categories and the ones where the owner-occupied rentals was less likely to have parking issues, although Linda pointed out, you know, they could still have parking. But um I don't know. I don't know, you guys.
Yeah, no, that's correct. The you, if you if you rent out your own house, there's no parking issue. You're just replacing yourself with guests. So there's no issue and that would still be allowed. ADUs and duplexes are completely out. What is unclear is what you can do with a single room in your residence. No, or a portion. So that's still true. So you can still rent out a single room. And then but you'd have to add, well, that becomes actually a conflict because yes, you would have to add parking, correct, but only for the single room, not for the house itself. Because the house itself already has parking. No, not necessarily. You would still have to do it. Yep. Yeah.
That's that's the one, that's the problem with the with the folks that have tried to register with single-room rentals is they have a small house. They they don't have, um, they have maybe one parking space onsite where they have to have two, and so they'd have to have three.
And again, that almost gets to because each neighborhood is different. And I may rent out a room in my house and I don't have a parking issue. Others may. So that kind of gets back to that CUP. I mean, it's almost for some of these, it's place-specific. And I don't know how you deal with that. Like the exception process or the CUP, that kind of raises some questions and and concerns, but we need to address parking because that's an issue. So how do we do that? You know, in a way that doesn't impact the neighborhood. We do that if applications are coming to us. We can do that within a variance or, you know, whatever, that we look at a particular situation of a house that's already there that maybe is triggered because they're doing a remodel. It's triggered, you know, the need for additional parking and there's no place in hell to put it. I mean, then we look at those things individually.
I agree.
So how do you do that within this process to address that? I mean, I think that's why I'm kind of thinking that we kind of put some thoughts out there. And then you guys kind of think about it, what our concerns are and all, and maybe kind of come back with some more thoughts on this.
It certainly seems like there could be a additional use permit with one of the, one of the variables being adequate parking and putting the onus on the applicant to verify adequate parking, whether it's street parking. Um, and in that case, if they wanted to get a variance and they came in with letters from all their neighbors that said, yeah, we don't care. Of course, we'd say that's a good thing, right?
And then the other thing to look at too is, you know, we need to think about the concept of a limit on the number of days. So that's something else for y'all to maybe think about. You know, and maybe come back and we have another discussion on that as well.
Yeah, so it's a quarter before 11:00. It feels like we're going around in circles. I'm not sure that we can come to a conclusion here tonight.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
On page six of the staff report are a series of questions. And I think we've addressed many of them. But one of the other ones was allowing uh short-term rentals in other zoning districts. And I just, for one, don't have any problem with that. I don't know if anybody else does.
Yeah, and I I would like to get an answer on that tonight if possible, because that's kind of one of the biggies. It's like, because if you if you allow them in any zoning district, then you basically several of the units that couldn't register can now register.
Let me ask a question on that because you're talking about all zones and are there commercial zones that are fairly limited in their application? So do we want to look at not just a blanket all zones, but look at some of those zones that you know, may be specific? And see if we want to not just do a blanket. So I'm thinking, you know, there's like commercial limited. I mean, we've got some odd ones. We've got a recreational.
But why, why? We're we're talking about units where people are renting out, especially if we keep with the owner occupied. Right? Like, why?
Yeah, and that we have whole, there's, the way Fairfax is structured is there's lots of houses that are in commercial zones. For example, and there's like apartments that might be above a storefront. So they they literally are everywhere. So, but yeah, I don't think CR was one of the ones. The ones that they that were listed are CLCHCC, those are the three, where we have homes that are in the in the the zoning districts, single-family homes that are kind of
Right, where it does state that in the document.
This is in the ordinance. Because there's three basically sections to the ordinance. It's really not overly complicated. It's just the definition. Definition, parking, zoning districts. That's, that's it. So then the zoning district says section three. And so it would be amending. Then we might not even have to amend 5.5 a single-family, because if we leave the ADU, JADU alone, then those would not have to be amended. Then you have to amend RD 5.5 to seven. You have to amend RM. You have to amend CLCHCC. And because those all have single-family homes within them or apartments within them.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
On zoning districts, I'm of the opinion that yes, there are special cases where it's a commercial area and, you know, maybe that requires some additional consideration. However, theoretically, you know, it still has to comply with all of these other standards, right? And so if the issue is parking, for example, it still has to comply with parking, right? So that's the mechanism to maybe not have that specific unit qualify as an STR. It still has to comply with, you know, everything else that's on here. And so I personally am in favor of opening up to all all zones. Um, obviously where there is housing, right? But that includes commercial and and the like.
Well, it's a, remember, this does two, this does three things, right? Three sections. So you allow, you open it up to all zones, but only for owner-occupied units.
As currently written.
As currently written. Right. Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, no, the zoning can be different one at a time. Yeah, no, I I understand. I hear commissioners agreeing to that, and I would agree to that too, I think. There's no reason to limit it. I think the zones that are proposed, that makes a lot of sense. You allow it in the commercial zones and you allow it in the 5.57. But when you do that, you have to be careful with, right? If you do multifamily residential zone and you would open up to any type with no restriction, you can build an apartment building with only short-term rentals. So the, these things work together. We can talk about them independently, but the effect is, if you break them apart, that's what makes it so complicated. No. No.
Yeah, okay.
But I mean, I had hoped that we could come to a form of a conclusion, but um, it looks like we're struggling. I am at least. The recommendations that you would like to get from us, I presume are urgent. This goes to the town council when?
I was shooting for November, but if it had to go December, that would probably be okay.
Uh, but so in October, we could still talk about this. So I think it might be good if we can do that because there's a lot and all the pieces work together. It's probably good if we bring this back for a second discussion. I think you have a lot of comments from us, but no conclusion.
And I think it would be good in the interim. I mean, we've talked about a lot of stuff like, you know, limiting CUPs, the parking issue. We can also take this time to provide staff some input after looking at this. And then come back with another discussion. We've done that before with other subjects. That would be good at this point to do that.
I I think that's necessary, considering the complexity.
So
Agreed.
So are we just, uh, do you want to continue this to the next meeting?
We would like to continue this to the next meeting in October. And in the interim, we will get deeper into it and as suggested by Commissioner Swift, provide staff with observations in addition to the comments we made now.
I think we, I'm not sure. I think we might have to vote on that just so we don't lose our public hearing notice.
Yep, we can do that.
So, okay. Guess I'll do a roll call or go ahead.
Well, probably have a, may have a need a motion to continue.
Yeah, motion to continue.
I'll move to continue the discussion about the short-term rental ordinance to next month's planning commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, I'll I'll do a roll call. So Swift?
Yeah.
Kelly?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Patrone?
Hi.
And Newton?
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, now we get to the fun part, finally.
Next, I think we, I assume that this doesn't have to take long, but if it does, then that might be a problem. It's 11 o'clock almost. Item four on the agenda.
Okay, I can I can go through. And what I could suggest with this is I'll go through the presentation and then if we wanted to kind of, since it's late, I guess maybe or maybe it's appropriate because it's dark skies.
Yeah, no, I correct. It's dark outside. I I kind of, we've received a lot of uh uh brilliant comments from the public, all very I think it's something we're all very interested in. So yeah, please do the presentation. And I think we still have somebody in the public. Maybe they want to talk to it. And maybe you have people online, even though it's late. So let's do it.
Okay, I have a PowerPoint to bring up here.
Is that online as well?
Oh, yeah, they're both, they're both online.
Thank you.
So dark sky regulations. So, so one thing that, just to, just to point out in kind of, when I get more into this topic, I realize that the town has a significant role, but there's all this talk about dark sky certification and dark skies and it if to do it effectively, the jurisdictions that have had the most success nationally are ones that have kind of a broader community approach. So the town has a part, but if if no one else in the community does anything about it, then it it will kind of not go very far. Because we, this is one of those things where we do not have unlimited enforcement capabilities and we are not going to go chasing people for their holiday lights. So um, this is one thing that's going to have to have a community-wide approach. So that's just my disclaimer upfront. However, the town does have a role, I mean, we can adopt zoning regulations, which mostly would apply. It's when new development comes in, like, you know, as new development comes in, we're adding the dark sky provisions. It's a little bit harder to go back retroactively actively to existing homes. Not impossible, but that that's where more of the neighbor-friendly approach comes in, where you advise people as to the regulations and have them tone down their lights. Uh, that's very difficult to do from an enforcement perspective. And the the town does have control over the streetlights. We use DC Electric, which is more kind of a regional utility, but the town does have control over the streetlights that were then the jurisdiction. So we do have quite a bit of authority there. Um, and then we can also adopt kind of policies that can apply. So then there's other things that come into dark sky. There's community involvement, where voluntary activities, kind of best practices, you know, community meetings. Some of these that the town could potentially help facilitate, but again, there has to be. And I think there are in Fairfax. There's interested people out there. It would just be a matter to get getting folks organized. And then there's education, which, you know, we can put stuff on the website and there's flyers and events. Some communities host night sky events. So the trade-offs with this is there is a certain amount of lighting for safety versus light pollution and like the the dark sky, International Dark Sky Organization that I've been researching a lot, they they kind of recognize that. And they have a lot of really, they have a model code that kind of has how much do you need? Do you just want to use the minimum amount of light for safety, but not too much light? So they have a very good code that kind of balances all that. There's also the private property rights versus regulations that enhance the community. So one, one thing that my big worry with this, especially and I've only been in Fairfax for a year, but I already get the impression that people have very strong opinions about what their neighbors do. Um, so I I don't want to just be giving people a bat to beat their neighbors with. So I I just want to be very cautious about that. One, one thing that you can do is, and one thing I would recommend when we do get to digging into the code updates with this, is that we look at exemptions. Like what, is there certain just exemptions that we can make to the light ordinance? Like, you know, holiday lights is a common one, low-lumin lights, um, you know, lights that don't you know, go off the property. So that'd be one thing that I would, I would recommend is that we re-look at, um, where can we just just outright exempt things to try to not get into that? Make this a positive thing versus a a negative thing. There's also, and again, the voluntary compliance versus enforcement. So this is from the uh Dark Sky Organization. Basically, you want lights to, only where it's needed. So you want the useful lights. You want it to be targeted. We talked about this at the last study session. I'm just presenting them here because they kind of form the basis of the of the the regulations that you can adopt. Light should be no brighter than necessary, only where needed and warm-colored. So this is so the ordinance objectives, and then this could, would be transformed into kind of, uh, when you, in the zoning code, you'd have purpose statements that would provide kind of a backup for why you're adopting those regulations. So you want to provide light for security. You want to prevent light trespass. Reduce, reduce sky glow, protect the natural environment and conserve energy. One interest that I've heard from a lot of the public comments we're getting is a protection of the natural environment. This little guy is, instead of heading towards the ocean, he's heading towards the the light off in the distance. So he's going the wrong direction because he's being redirected by the light, that this happens with bird populations, that type of thing. If they have bright lights, they are attracted to the bright lights. So it's very important for wildlife to not have light pollution. So this is kind of the, how the zoning ordinance would be laid out. Um, you'd have purpose statements. You definitions and graphics would be particularly important, which is difficult with our, our municipal code doesn't have a lot of graphics. So this might be a section that's going to have graphics. graphics. But then you want to have, when, when do the regulations apply? What's exempt? And then the actual standards, what regulations on timing, when do the lights need to be dimmed or shut off? What are the limits on brightness? What are the light color or temperature? And then the shield and directional controls? And that's kind of the zoning. And then, then the street lights is like in a different section of the code or in public works standards. So there's several different places where these regulations would apply. So the current, we do have some light pollution regulations in our current ordinance. And this is in the ridgeline development chapter, and these are all, they say all the right things. We have light intensity, shielding, color, temperature, light curfew, light trespass. So basically, I mean, in concept, we're taking what's in this chapter and we're expanding it to apply to the entire community versus just ridgeline areas. So the first one, which is, which is significant is the light temperature lumens, light temperature. The color is measured in terms of Kelvin. And so what I've, we've researched a lot of codes and the standard numbers that they use are either 3,000 Kelvin or 2,700 Kelvin. And I, and the reason that they use those values is those are the, that's where you can buy the lowest temperatures, where you can buy LED lights affordably, or they're readily available at those temperature ranges. So, and the, the higher you go, the, basically, it's, 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 it's a reverse incentive for, for lights. The higher you go, the easier they are to find because people like brighter lights. So the lower you go in this temperature scale, the more difficult they are to find. The old style low pressure sodium and high pressure sodium lights, which are, which were the bread and butter for streetlights for many decades are, are in the orange and yellow category. So those are actually superior from a dark sky perspective because they're in the right color range, but now they're all being replaced by LED lights, which are more energy efficient, but they're also a lot brighter. So anyway, so there's, this is my long way of saying that most of the codes that we're seeing are either requiring a 3,000 Kelvin or 2,700 Kelvin color maximum. This is the example of how light should be shielded. So what they're suggesting is that, and basically you want to have something that's either the better or the best. The better is you're directing all the light down where, where you need it. And then the best is not only are you directing light down where you need it, but then it turns off when it's not needed. So and I think that's, that's, we can accomplish that with our regulations. Probably the exception to this is you may want to have some allowances for kind of low level lights. Like there is, there is, you know, pedestrian lights or something that has like real low level on the, on the sidewalk surface or something that is not going to get up into the night sky, but it's going to stay low because it's very dim. Might want to have some allowances for that. And these are just the examples of dark sky designs, kind of typical off the shelf. Lights can be bought in either one of these. So part of this is education. If people know that the light on the right side is better for the night sky, they'd be more likely to purchase that. So that's kind of a part of the educational component versus the one on the left. Because again, this is going to be very difficult to enforce if somebody just goes out and just Home Depot on the weekend and just buys a light. We do not have the code enforcement capacity be, to be chasing them around if they don't, they may not even be getting a permit. So. There's a good concept that we've seen in a couple of codes is there's the light budget. There's a certain number of lumens that are based on the property size. And there's all sorts of smart people that have kind of analyzed this and determined what would be the right lighting level for different zones or different property types. And so you assign a property, say a single family home property or to a commercial property, and then the, the applicant probably only really works very well for new applications, but then you can divide that lighting up, however, is most appropriate. Like you may want to have a light above the entryway. You may want to have some area lighting out in the driveway area, but you, you can kind of decide where the budget goes on the property. And you'd still have the light limited at the property level to zero or close to zero, and you'd still require the shielding to make sure that the light goes where it's required. So this is an example of an application for a house. You'd, you, as part of the application submittal package, you'd have them do a little light, a simple light study. Have them identify where all the lights going to go and what is the lumens? And, you know, so that the planner, whoever's reviewing or the building official could determine whether it's consistent with the, the ordinance. So light trespass is another item which could be covered in the code. Basically, we require shielding. You could allow some unshielded lights, again, if it's a very low level. And wouldn't result in too much spill off the property. And you want to require a light very low at the property line. And a lot of codes that I've seen, like a 0.1 foot candles is kind of a standard. You don't want to go above that value. There's also the concept of a light curfew. Eleven o'clock is a typical time, but you know, 10 o'clock, you could kind of pick a time when you think the light should be either dimmed or off. You could exempt lights that are needed for security. There's also provisions that apply to sport field lightings where we'd have an exemption. You just write in an exemption so that you're not cutting the lights off on somebody when they're in the middle of a baseball game. That's an extra innings. And you could also tie the lighting to the opener, the close of a business in a commercial area, so that someone's not lighting up their parking lot all night long when their business is closed. Streetlights. And I've been in contact with the Public Works Director. And we may try to get either him or somebody from DC Electric here to future planning commission meeting, who would be more of an expert on streetlights myself. Because they have all sorts of limitations with existing lights and when are they going to change out the bulbs and that type of thing. So they can speak to those a lot better. This is one idea I found in a code that I was researching where there's a, this was a a section of the code, which are three streetlights, you require them to be fully shielded. You have the color temperature limits of, as I mentioned before, the 2,700 Kelvin. You exempt traffic signals for obvious reasons. And then you can set different illumination levels based on the type of road. So like Sir Francis Drake would be a major road and that could be like one foot candle or 1.5 foot candle lighting level and a local road, which would be, you know, Fairfax Hill. Windy road could be much lower at 0.4 foot candles. And then you'd, then a simple thing is that you could double the lighting at intersections to provide more safety. And so that's, that's it. That's kind of the, the core of what could be in a code. And so I just wanted to get the, bring this to the planning commission, get your initial feedback. And then the idea is that I would take this initial feedback and then we would dig in deeper and actually come back with code language. And this would be a brand new section of the, of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Questions for planning director?
Well, I have questions. And it's more, it'll be more like a comment after. So what do you mean by foot candles? So when we talk about, as an example, we talk about local roads, how does that apply to, for example? Because what we have in Fairfax are lights, 3,000 K on utility poles. And we get, we have a lot of complaints about trespass and brightness. How do you explain to me what the foot candle average on a local road means? I mean, how does that relate to lighting, let's say on a dead end road in, in town? How is that applied? What does it mean?
This example that I found, I think envisioned probably more of a grid network. Because it was kind of, that's like the, the, the average foot candle, if you had like regular spaced streetlights going along. You could probably use it in Fairfax for like Sir Francis Drake, but I think to your point, it, it might be difficult to do that for local Fairfax roads. We might have to come up with a different standard, like maybe a lumen limit at the light pole itself, something like that.
Okay, I think I'm going to save most of mine for comments. So if anybody else has questions.
Nope, don't see any. Okay. Comments? Let's go through it. Or first, we're going to take public comments. Sorry. Okay, good.
I do have two people waiting online.
Good, okay.
Lynn? Lynn, it is time for public comment. Please go ahead.
Hi, I wanted to say it was a great report and it was a good presentation. I've been asking about dark skies for years now with town council. They did put shields on our streetlights, I don't know, 15 years ago or something like that, brought them down a little bit. But my problem, and I'm passionate about this, are these resort commercial recreation style string lights? Like Costco sells them, they're very popular. I live on Marinda. When I look down in my little valley off the back of my deck and out of my living room, it used to be dark. But now I see string lights. I have to close my drapes when I'm in my living room because my eye just goes right on the line when I'm reading. I mean, it's not great. In our back bedroom, our neighbors had them up on their fence kindly. They moved into the other side. But still, when you go out in the deck, there's no more dark little valley. There's these horrific string lights that they've got to go. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm all for everything else we're doing, but can't we put a ban on those? I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. You see them at restaurants, you see them in the neighborhoods and they're, they're really bad. I don't know why we just can't have an ordinance that they're not allowed at all. I guess that's basically what gets me. I mean, really, it's bad. And I'm not the only one. I'll talk to a lot of people that say they have to get dark shades because people have those string lights on the side of their house. They have them in their backyards. So I just think they shouldn't be allowed, even if they're below the fence line. Because if you're, if you're there down below and you're up above, they're still blaring into your house. So maybe you guys go on a night walk. Try that. See what that's like. I'll go with you. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have a next speaker?
I do have another one. Dee Lee, please go ahead. Sorry, you moved a little bit when I was trying to allow you to talk. So you should be able to go now.
Thank you. I want to thank the people on the planning commission who have, over the years that I've been watching this have advanced this to this point, that we're actually maybe making some progress on getting this to happen. I live on Cascade. It was, it was my dream to live in the country when I was a kid. And I used to walk up Cascade Drive, kind of in the semi-dark. And there was a point at a curve in the road, there was no street light and I had to rail my way through, but it was kind of exciting. And when I went to sleep at night, I could leave my curtains open. Well, actually, I didn't have curtains. I could, I could leave the windows clear and sleep by the, the travel of the moon. But when the LED lights went in, I had to purchase light blocking curtains in order to be able to sleep at night. And I would really appreciate being able to go back somewhat the way that it was. And I appreciate Jeff, your research into what you've been talking about. You're researching the, the, the colors and the, and the, and the levels. So thank you all. And I used to be able to walk out in the front yard and see the stars. I can't do that anymore and I hope to be able to do that again. I think this is really important. The birds are starting to sing at night instead of in the morning because of the lights. So please, you know, keep going. And again, I appreciate everything that y'all are doing in order to advance this cause. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
I have no more hands online.
Nope. Okay, that's it. Bring it back to the commission. Comments?
Okay, so at the last meeting, we had questions about our streetlights. That haven't been answered in, in the public works. We thought maybe we'd have the public works director here, I think. Streetlights, all of our public lighting is a big part of this. And, and we should have some questions and answers there.
Yeah, I, I think I can get someone at the next meeting. I'm pretty sure. So.
And, and overall, this isn't something that I think we do two meetings. And we have policy. It's not like a two and done. This is really something that incorporates the whole community. So it's the business districts, you know, we should be bringing them into this discussion because business lightings is, is a part of this, to include signage in that area. There's been some of the public comments we got referenced. An individual that's worked with Dark Sky West Marin and was also involved with the Brisbane town ordinance and policies on this, but this really needs to be comprehensive for the community. So affecting lighting, how we choose it, the color, the Kelvins. I agree that, you know, one of the commenters said that lighting is now lower. So what was when our lights were bought, 3,000? Now we're looking at 2,700. And I think that might be something the county's looking at, 2,700, 2,400. How does that apply with our streetlights? You know, we just have, it, it can't be just what affects the land use aspect. This is something that has to be a comprehensive policy for the community and it's not something that takes, you know, like two meetings. West Marin has been working on this one for a long time. So I think it needs more discussion. It needs more input to see where we go with this versus coming up with a draft policy right now. And I also do believe that this shouldn't only apply to new construction, but we should look at, you know, as some ordinances do, having a time when existing has to, has to apply with it. I think Brisbane does that. It can be years out, but I think that has to be part of this process and this policy.
Our comments.
Must be late. I, I have a very few. Just reading through this, a few points. I think in the presentation, it came about to make an exception regarding the shielding for lower output light fixtures. lower output light fixtures. I had already marked for myself to not do that. And I think we just heard a sample of that, those string lights. Each individual bulb is an extremely low light output, but the aggregate of them is what the problem is. And the same is true for these landscape lights that you put, you stake at the floor. So I would not limit the shielding requirement based on the power of the light bulb itself. In reading it through, there's also shielding, being fully partially shielded. There's a mention in the document of 2,000 initial lumens. That is a very powerful light. I would seriously spring that down. I think you would want to fine tune that. And then there's one that's like a discussion item. And, and I actually think that's a good idea or to suggestion. I think, um, initially you would apply this to all new construction. But I think it's good to send an end date or when all construction, including existing, needs to comply. So it, it's not so complicated or expensive to do, but give enough time for people to grow into that. Um, I think that's important when there is a discussion about what is right or wrong. It will greatly help if that end date is somewhere in vision. So I would recommend that. Those are my major comments of going through that and maybe referencing to some of the public comments that came in. And I, I believe from the PowerPoint that that's already integrated, but, um, the emphasis that this is not about only about humans. It is extremely disruptive for wildlife, including insects. I think in your statement, in your, um, mission statement, I think you want to include that. I like the turtle, but I think it's, it's birds and insects. They are incredibly troubled by this. Thank you.
And I, if I could just jump in, I agree. And we also heard about, uh, human health. And, um, you know, I think we should include all flora and fauna. So, you know, we want those night looming Sirius to have a chance to.
And along those lines too, when you talk about light trespass, I mean, we're not talking yet about, um, curfews and that type of thing, but you talked about light trespass just going beyond a property. So when I think of the downtown and businesses, I focus more on light going where it's needed. Versus being, you know, in some areas more concerned about it trespassing in the business areas. What are we lighting? Why? And how much do we need to light? And then also the timing of it. But I go back to just doing the holistic approach on this and we need to do, to do more of that. I would recommend, um, the individual that other areas have used. He's local.
With that, I think we can proceed.
Can I make one suggestion?
Yes.
I think, uh, I think I, I agree with the notion of, you know, not trying to rush this, but the one thing I would rush just a little bit is, um, the streetlight discussion. So maybe that could be the next thing that we do. I'll try to recruit as you've, I'll recruit the public works director and somebody from DC electric to come and we can talk about streetlights. Cause and if for no other reason, I know that they have money. Um, and they get periodic money and because this, um, you know, I mean, we're perpetually broke as a public, there's just all public agencies are, but I know that there's money out there to do energy retrofits. And so there's all this, um, not all this money, but there's some money out there to do LED replacements of some of the inefficient high pressure sodium lights. And so we want, when they do do those replacements, we would like to encourage them to do them in a dark sky way. So. So it kind of worked both ways. We will get information from them and then we can help guide them to.
Well, I think those, those high pressure sodium ones are going to be of concern to the community because a lot of those are the streetlights. The, um, historic streetlights downtown that the community is going to have a lot of interest in what they're replaced with and, and what, what they look like. But as far as bringing in the public works director, you know, there's mapping. There's data on Marin maps where you can identify all of the streetlights in a jurisdiction and it gives who makes them and, and their age and that type of thing. So part of that discussion could be asking questions about, um, the warranty on our existing lights, when they need to be replaced, how we address that as well.
Okay. So anyway, I will try to get, uh, if not, I'll, I'll go for October, but if not, we can get them in November sometime in the next couple of months.
Yes. Thank you for that. Yes. The streetlights is a very important part of this. Probably half of the light output going up comes from, well, maybe a third, but yeah. Thank you. We will move on to item number five, meeting minutes. Anybody got?
I have a quick correction. And I already sent this in, but page three under item two, um, change from Commissioner Swift stated, stated recused herself from this application. To Commissioner Swift recused herself from this agenda item due to proximity to the project. And Linda already has that because I sent that ahead. That was the only correction I had.
Anybody else? Going to get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve with that correction.
Second.
How can I, okay. Roll call. Uh, Swift? Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Epstein.
Uh, Petrone?
Aye.
And Newton?
Aye.
Okay. That passes.
That passed. Good. We already had a report from the planning director. So I think that suffices. Thank you for that.
You just don't want to hear me talk anymore.
Any other comments or requests? Commissioner Swift and then Commissioner Newton.
So looking at, um, the agenda tonight where we had the item on the short-term rentals. I found it just as member of the public to look at that item as it was identified on the agenda and easily understand what it applied to. Until I got to the third line from the bottom where it was saying that we're looking at changing all those code sections for short-term rentals. So I'd suggest to make it easier for the public to understand what they're seeing is if it's possible to do something like agenda item three, short-term rentals, and then have the dis- description more fully that we're, um, looking at changing, you know, code sections versus having it at the end of that to see what all that applies. Cause it's kind of difficult to get through just an idea.
Yeah, I agree. The, that's called burying the lead. So, yeah.
And we don't want to do that.
No.
Um, and then if it's possible, I know the council has the ability to put public comments in the agenda item comments on the website before the meeting. And I would like to see that for the planning commission as well, so that the public can read the comments that are brought forth. If we can find, you know, space and time to do that, some of those have come in, some of the comments we received today. I mean, for this meeting have come in early. So that would be helpful, I think for the public.
Rachel Newton?
Thank you. Um, I'm hoping that the planning director can give us an, uh, a report on the 10 Olima issues that were raised during the, uh, public comment on non-attended items and the sign by, uh, Sir Francis Drake and Miranda for the charter school. If you could just report back to us on those two items. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you for that. That's a good point. That's seems concerning. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Can I get a roll call on that?
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Uh, Swift?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jansen?
Yes.
Petrone?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.